Talking.
There we go. You could have brought one. That's funny, Michael. I call the January eighth, twenty twenty five Bremerton City Council Study Session Order. Study Sessions as a reminder are always open for the public to attend in purpose and person. Or you may choose to listen in and view remotely. But there'll be no opportunities for input. The content of these items subject to change and no action is anticipated tonight. Just an ongoing reminder that questions or comments by the public may be submitted on any item at any time. Email to city dot council at C I dot Bremerton dot W A dot U S. And Zoom recordings of study sessions will also be available online within a few days following the meeting. Any of the items approved for action by the council tonight will be placed on the January fifteenth, twenty twenty five City Council meeting. Or as otherwise determined. We'll start off tonight with an information only item. We've got Mr. Nick Attai here to present a Sixth Street Active Transportation Project Update. Nick, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. See if I can. Screen share, Dylan. There we go. All right. So, uh, this is a general project update as we seek to advance the Sixth Street Active Transportation Improvement Project from concept phase through the preliminary engineering phase. Uh, as many of you of you know, we hosted in-person open house in November, which included design concepts and had an opportunity for input after that meeting. Uh, this presentation is going to focus on two specific areas. Uh, based on what we see, one being bike lane protection and second being, uh, deeply separated right turn lanes. Uh, and really the goal of this presentation is to get council to confirm input on, uh, the scope of the project for some input guidance as we uh, seek to bring a contract amendment or, uh, our engineer H D R, uh, back to this council for approval. Um, on a, on a separate note, I wanted to, um, give an update on the grant we submitted on. So the Paul was submitted on Washout Bike and Ped Program Grant. Uh, we were just notified, uh, recently that, uh, we ranked nineteenth out of ninety-eight projects submitted. So really promising. Uh, we are within the estimated funding, uh, levels for that program. Uh, Washout submits their prioritized project list to the state legislature. Uh, that's going to be, uh, run through the budget cycle. And, uh, we should have an idea, um, or we should, if, if awarded, which, you know, we had to say that's the case. You know, five bottom of the sphere. So really promising news, uh, about just over three million dollars that you, uh, requested and zero dollars will match. So just a quick recap of the purpose of the project. So, um, you know, really the theme here is safety. So it's safety for all road users. Really is a three century, uh, focused project. Obviously, the, the bicycle facilities are a major component of the project. We're connecting a, a critical east-west gap. Sixth Street is a very dynamic corridor, um, lots of different land uses, uh, to make your transit, transit routes, uh, designated, uh, freight corridor. Uh, it's a, it's a busy art serial. I mean, we have, um, over thirteen thousand vehicles per day traveling on the corridors, uh, in the areas, a lot of driveways, a lot of, uh, signalized intersection. So, um, you know, we had, um, you know, it's challenging for us to, to build concepts and, and try to improve safety. There's some planning, uh, previous planning studies, I listed here, uh, these are all available on the project website. Um, the graphic on the top of the slide kind of shows the, uh, the exhibit we presented at the open house meeting, uh, with the alternatives. So, um, what we did is, uh, we developed these alternatives under some general guidelines and, and, uh, really those guidelines, uh, with the project's channelization focus. So, you know, this isn't a full reconstruction project. Uh, we consider all road users, you know, putting, you know, uh, vehicles, transit, bikes, ped. We use standards and best practices. So as you know, the city doesn't have a robust, uh, library of, of, uh, standards and, uh, all the season guidelines related to active transportation. So, um, some of those, uh, national standards shown on the screen, but we use those, develop some concepts. Uh, and we also wanted to manage the, uh, the cost and the scope of the project. Obviously, you know, uh, the project is funding, funding constrained. Uh, so, you know, we were working with, uh, a budget that gets established for the project in consideration for the alternatives. Uh, this exhibit that you see on the screen is available on the project website. Um, again, we had a survey open, um, some time after that open house meeting to get public. Um, we had the, again, had the open house meeting in November. We had over sixty attendees at the meeting, really well-attended meeting. Um, I know several of you were there. Um, the online survey that was, uh, available through early December focused on identifying preferences and the alternatives presented. Um, unfortunately, we only got forty-nine survey responses. Um, so, uh, just to put that in perspective, that represents less than one percent of the daily users of the corridor. Um, but, uh, the responses that we did get were, um, focused really again on safety. Um, they prioritize the R F B, uh, the flashing, pedestrian crossings. Um, there were, uh, preferences to provide, uh, separate white, right turn lanes for vehicles. And, uh, co- uh, comments for bike lane physical protection as the highest, uh, target priorities. Um, recast curb, so, uh, physical curb was preferred over, uh, flexible delineator posts like we have on Washington Avenue for the, uh, bike lane protection. And then we did receive some, um, uh, comments in the survey that, you know, had concerns of traffic congestion and a desire for increased, uh, flight safety. Um, in addition to the online survey responses, uh, we received several email comments. I know several of those, um, were submitted to the council. Uh, almost all of those focused on, uh, cyclist safety and separation. Uh, again, you know, seeking corridor-wide bike lane protection and, um, uh, seeking elimination of separate people right turn lanes, especially Naval Avenue. Um, some of the comments we did receive, um, you know, provided some sketches of, uh, different alternatives, uh, that weren't presented at the open house meeting. So I'm going to get into, um, a little bit of, uh, weeds here. I apologize on separated bike lanes, but the context is important, uh, as we have a discussion. So, um, uh, bike lane protection was evaluated using bicycle level of traffic stress methodology. I'm just going to call it B L T S. I keep saying that. Um, as briefly, uh, discussed at the last, last month Public Works Committee meeting, uh, we don't have a perfect policy or standard related to B L T S. Um, B L T S basically measures a perceived comfort level for a cyclist traveling down a roadway. So it's a, it's a very, um, kind of somewhat subjective, uh, depends on the user, um, and it's a generalized, uh, stress level based on a few factors like, vehicle travel speed, uh, with the roadway, things like that. Uh, we ended up using a, uh, method of measuring this that Washout developed for this initial screening. Uh, we also applied engineering judgment, uh, uh, the project based on site-specific, uh, consideration. Um, at the open house, uh, bike lane protection was shown as an alternative in two locations. Um, the first location was on the west side of the project, uh, from Eleventh Street to Montgomery Avenue. Um, higher vehicle speeds there, um, obviously coming down the, the hill towards six, uh, to kid that way. Uh, there's several back-to-back signals, uh, once you get past Wycoff. Uh, the second location was on the far east side of the project, uh, in the westbound direction, uh, between Highland and Washington. And that, um, uh, separation was recommended due to the, uh, site distance issue, uh, in that location. So while the, the input received praised the consideration of bike lane protecting, uh, there were several comments requesting protection be incorporated as a improvement project. Um, so some of the, the things that, you know, we considered, uh, we have bike lane protection again, uh, we don't have a defined policy or standard. Again, we're using, um, the best, uh, information out there. Um, we have, uh, insufficient roadway width to meet standards in some areas, and we'll talk about that here in minutes. Um, there's a significant number of driveways and transit stops, uh, high vehicle volumes, um, cost maintenance. They're all considerations. These aren't fatal flaws per se. They're just all considerations. All right, busiest slide, apologize here. Um, so again, bike, bicycle level traffic stress, um, the scale that's used is a one through four. So one's going to be your lowest stress level, um, you know, more suitable for children. Four is going to be your, um, your highest stress level, which, you know, really, um, you know, strong, um, cyclist would, would feel, you know, somewhat comfortable riding on. Uh, just for reference, right now Sixth Street currently a, um, level of stress four for cyclists, uh, based on the Washout methodology. Another, uh, perspective, lower Wheaton Way, uh, based on the Washout methodology is a level two. Where you've got the two lanes with the, with the bike lane. Uh, Washout defines protected bike lanes as separated. So you see in the title of the slide, it says separated slash protected. So there is a little bit of, uh, difference in terminology based on the, the standard. But Washout defines a separated bike lane as requiring a two-foot minimum, uh, buffer from the travel lane, uh, between the bike lane and the, and the travel lane combined with use of a vertical feature, uh, such as flexible post or barrier. The, uh, the table at the bottom of the slide is, um, uh, kind of how Washout classifies the stress level. It's based on, uh, the lane configuration, the amount of vehicle volume on the roadway and what they call the target speed. So, uh, this table that I have on the slide shows, uh, how you calculate or determine the, the bicycle level of truck stress from the Washout defines separated bike lane. Uh, so the red box is the lane configuration. So for Sixth Street, we'd be converting from two lanes in each direction to one lane each direction. The A A D T is the annual average daily traffic. Uh, again, as I mentioned, the, the, um, portal has, um, well over, uh, thirteen thousand vehicles per day. So Washout caps their, um, their traffic, uh, level at three thousand vehicles per day. Uh, so we'd be in that category. And then Washout defines the target speed, um, as kind of your desired speed, which you're trying to achieve the posted speed of the roadway. So, uh, you can see in the table regardless of the, the speed, it's all red, uh, level of traffic stress two. Um, the only way based on Washout's methodology to get to a level of traffic stress one, which, you know, again, would be your more, uh, suitable route for children, is to have a low, lower volume, low-speed roadway, um, uh, with one lane in each direction. Then you can see, really have to have less than three thousand, uh, vehicles per day, uh, with that one lane in each direction, along with a separated bike lane to have that, uh, uh, more suitable, uh, lower surface route. Um, a level of tracks just two can be provided on those urban roadways. So, uh, this slide shows, uh, kind of cross-section of, uh, Sixth Street. And, um, you can see the, the width of the roadway between the curbs varies from forty-two to forty-four feet. Uh, we're a couple of feet wider, uh, west of Warren, a feet narrower, or east of Warren. So Public Works Committee, uh, there was some discussion about, you know, possibly if we were to, uh, put, uh, flexible posts or some sort of, some sort of protection in, what that might look like. Uh, so, um, west of Warren, uh, we would have just over five feet of, um, effective bike lane width. Again, placing the delineator post just inside that edge line of the, the bike lane, uh, similar to what we have on Washington Avenue. Um, east of Warren, the roadway again is slightly narrower, uh, so would be just over four feet of, uh, effective bike lane width. Um, in all of these, uh, scenarios, you see that the travel line width is ten and a half feet. Um, that was to accommodate the, uh, uh, kids' transit. And again, it's a great round sweep, so ten and a half feet is kind of the minimum for that type of roadway. Um, that's a slight reduction from the current lane width, which were possibly eleven feet wide. Um, getting into more about the flexible delineator post scenario, uh, concept. So the, the graphic on the left side is kind of hard to see, um, but essentially what I'm trying to show there is, um, those yellow icons are all existing driveway access points. Um, this is just east of Montgomery, between Montgomery and Bryant. It's just a sample, uh, snippet there. You've got the gateway parking right on the south side. Um, so, uh, when you count for the driveways and the intersection, the transit stops, only about sixty percent of the bike lanes would be able to have any kind of, uh, vertical feature, you know? Again, if it's delineator post, only about sixty percent of that, uh, section of bike lane would be able to have that sort of protection. Uh, that percentage is generally consistent through the project. Again, the takeaway here, just for, uh, information is if we were to consider additional bike lane protection, um, there's going to be, there's still going to be a large, um, amount of, uh, bike lanes that remain unprotected just due to the number of driveways. Uh, flexible delineator posts are widely used for bike lane separation where, you know, we have, uh, locations here in the city that we've used them, um, they have a, a low initial cost, they're, they're highly, uh, visible, uh, they're able to withstand impacts. The downside of this type of separation is that they are not hard protection, uh, like a, like a concrete barrier, not continuous. And, um, again, you know, those get hit, there's, uh, a little bit more maintenance burden keeping them, um, keeping them, you know, in place. So the two photos on the, the right side of the screen kind of shows the, the two options. The top one shows, um, you know, a separated bike lane or washout definition where you've got the buffer area between the bike lane and travel lane with a vertical feature. The bottom, uh, picture is, uh, what we have on Washington Avenue, which wouldn't be considered a separated bike lane. Uh, essentially putting the delineator post on edge line or top line. Um, this slide really just, uh, compares the estimated cost of installing the flexible delineator post for the current recommendation, which we presented at the open house to the project wide. Um, what we found out is it would be about an additional quarter million dollars to extend the bike lane protection to the entire project. If we were to use some sort of hard elements, recast curves with flexible delineator posts, um, you know, we can probably expect to double that cost by, because of, uh, half a million dollars. We don't recommend, again, going back to the space limitations, we would recommend putting any kind of a hard barrier, uh, in danger that wouldn't be able to provide, you know, some sort of, you know, two-foot buffer between the vehicle lanes and the bicycle lanes just from a safety standpoint. Um, several, um, um, incidences where, you know, cities that put, um, some sort of hard protection on the curb and cyclists, uh, can hit the, the edge of those, uh, vehicles hit those. So there are some safety considerations for, uh, the hard protection as well. So I want to, uh, take a minute to pause, answer, uh, any questions regarding bike lane protection, um, and, and try to get some maybe input or assistance from the council on, on maybe next step to direction, uh, moving the project forward. So just to kind of, uh, recap, so the current recommendation would be to only provide bike lane protections in specific locations where, uh, we can provide the separation with the, with the vertical elements. Uh, again, focusing on achieving a, uh, bicycle level traffic stress two. Uh, the council can as an option, uh, provide con- you know, concurrents or input to proceed with a corridor-wide bike protection strategy. Um, however, the project budget would require, uh, compromise potentially in other areas. I mean, again, I, I mentioned that, uh, you know, just looking good that we're, you know, receiving funding from Washout Grant. Uh, but there's trade-offs, right? So as soon as we, uh, add additional, uh, elements of the project, there comes a funding gap and we have to determine where that compromise happens. Um, for either scenario, we'll be further evaluating the support section, if usable. Um, additionally, any in- installation of bike lane vertical separation, um, you know, we'll have to consider, uh, long-term operation and maintenance. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of pause here and, and open up the question and discussion related to bike lane protection.
Jay, Jane?
So I have a couple of questions. Um, number one, I sounded the impression that the city does have a standard for bike lanes that have been in place for a long time and it's five feet, not including a concrete gutter. So when you, the first project that is going to repave, um, the majority of Sixth Street or the center section, are you paving over the, the gutter pan with asphalt?
So I believe the, um, the gutter is variable on Sixth Street. In some areas, there's a lot of gutter pan and in some areas there's a deal. So, um, Shane, is that something that you would be kind of matching in kind with what's out there today?
Yeah, so in a lot of locations, actually out there, we, uh, pay right up to the face of the curb. There is a gutter pan. So when we went through, uh, for the past, you know, six years and, uh, paved the four sections of the quarter, we had to upgrade curb ramp. So you will see some curb and gutter out there for those locations. But we had to match in with the asphalt adjacent to the face of curb in locations.
Okay, I get that. And I'm pretty sure the city does have a standard for five feet wide.
We do have that today, actually. But it shows a five-foot bike lane with the, including the curb and, or the gutter pan.
And includes a gutter pan?
Yeah, if you look at our standard details and it's in the roadway crossing, unless there's another detail that I'm, who to say.
Okay, because, I mean, when the city uses Washout standards, those does not include the gutter.
Yeah, so there, yeah, yeah.
But it depends.
Yeah, maybe if you look at NACTO, NACTO, you know, kind of a leading national, uh, you know, agency that, uh, who designs on active transportation facilities. Um, they, they also have a different, you know, kind of, uh, desired minimum for bike lanes, but they do talk about if you do have a gutter pan, you know, there is a, uh, minimum, you know, again, each project with a different.
So then, another question I have, who's paying for the intersection of Naval and Sixth? Is it the Naval Avenue project or is it the Sixth Street project?
I can answer that question. Um, we are really trying to figure out the scope of work for this project so we can figure out how we can phase in or enable projects together, uh, because there's going to be coordination considerations. So we do have, uh, the intersection right now in Naval Avenue, uh, but it could be that depending on the features and the elements of this project and the timing of this project. It may be, uh, something that we would need to shift over, you know, that work to be compatible with other projects. So at this point, it's not known, but we're hoping to get to a point where we can understand the scope of this project and make those adjustments.
Yeah, I think the, the answer to that becomes a lot more clear once we kind of figure out what's happening or what the, the proposed, uh, design conflict. Is it Naval? And we presented one that showed right away acquisition ride. As soon as you wire right away, then you're, it becomes a snowball of that, uh, signal, uh, you know, reconstruction and, uh, private property improvement.
So then, he says a comment, ASHTO has now produced a, um, bicycle lane design guidance manual. And actually, um, there are local people who are going to buy it, but it was five hundred dollars for one copy. And so they're hoping county would buy it or the city would buy it.
We, we ordered, yeah.
You have, you have the new one?
Well, we, we ordered.
Yeah, I can't remember, ASHTO, there's one that it's on pre-order and then I think they're going to have them available at some point.
Because the snippets that we've looked at of it, what is designed on both Naval and on Sixth Street doesn't meet those new guidelines.
Right, so again, um, and, and, you know, I haven't seen the entirety of the new manual. But, uh, uh, the, the way I've seen a lot of these manuals is, you know, there's the, the desired, uh, design. And then there's, there's, uh, you know, design options where you're working with a constraint. So there's kind of a level of, you know, this is what we, you know, what you should seek to achieve. If you can't achieve that, then here are your options to, uh, mitigate. Built-in strategies to work around the business constraint.
I'm just hopeful the mitigation isn't lack of safety for non-vehicular traffic.
Yeah, this, this manual is really new. I mean, it just dropped for us, I think, a couple of weeks ago and we're able to order. Um, so we're all waiting to, you know, dive into it when we get it, to figure out what it says, um, but we don't know at this point what's, what's in there.
Okay. All right, other counselors have a chance to question?
First of all, congrats on the grant. That is fantastic, guys. That's, I'm glad we talked about through all the funding priorities and the quickest way to get to this project. So that's, that's fantastic. And was it, but I have three point four million total, total in my head, is that right?
It was, uh, just over three, it was like three point one million. That, that was construction cost and then we factored in some internal cost construction management. So it's not three point one million part construction.
Oh, that's the grant and not excluding match.
There's no match.
Oh, no, not much, so that is full funding.
Full, full funding, uh.
Oh, that's good. Um, no, great, great presentation. Kind of echo, I think a few of us have said it before on that survey, because I'm going to go through the questions myself and I got some feedback that I think there was some low attendance because of the, I remember I took it and I looked at someone like, do you want A or B? And I'm like, well, neither.
Neither.
And there wasn't a whole lot of flexibility in being able to respond. And I heard some people kind of started taking it, got frustrated, said, never mind. So I'm a little leery of interpreting too much from the, from the survey questions, but I'm glad we've gotten a lot of print and verbal input. Um, so I remember talking at the open house and I'm, I'm looking at this picture here. If we
Should have heard of this slide deck.
Yeah, it was a couple of slides back and it's the picture was showing the, the weddings.
Yeah.
Separated protected bike lanes?
I thought, yeah, I thought we could basically replicate what we have on, yeah, that's the one. Uh, what we have on Washington, the full length without having to sacrifice much of the center turn lane.
Yeah, so the, the majority of the project, we would be able to achieve, you know, a similar, uh, configuration of Washington. Uh, it's just, uh, again, a couple of feet difference east of, of Warren. Again, I mean, that's a lower traffic, um, yeah, I could even say lower speed potentially, uh, segment of the project. Um, you know, it's just the trade-off is, you know, and this is, this is where it gets really subjective, right? Is, you know, um, you may have someone that says, I, you know, I prefer to have a wider bike lane, um, without any kind of delineation. It might have someone that says, I, I'd be okay with a, a narrower bike lane with some sort of vertical feature there. Um, you know, and it, and that's the, that's the challenge when we're looking at these options is there's such a wide range of user perspectives and, um, you know, there, you know, this is getting into an area where like, okay, um, you know, there's not a lot of guidance on, uh, having reduced bike lane widths, you know, when you're looking at other features, right? So, um,
I'd point out the gutter, like the gutter pan is part of this. Anywhere that we have a gutter pan, where we ground and we matched into the lip of gutter, that five feet width, five foot width includes the gutter pan, which isn't ideal.
Yeah, I'd walk it in that case, yeah. Yeah, Washington like five foot, including the gutter, so we, we made it work there, yeah.
Right. Um, and also a little bit of the challenge is that, um, when we take a look at an active standard, they do allow you to go down to three feet for a bike, right? Uh, if you have to, right? But, uh, so there is, uh, flexibility that they provide in there, but what it comes down to is user preference, right? And what people feel comfortable with, and that's a wide range, right? And, um, and so there is some flexibility for us into those standards, but.
Cool.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing, you know, we've talked to, or talked about, we've talked about this, the bicycle level of traffic stress, right? So, um, you know, uh, I, I think at the end of the day, right, you know, I, I don't think, uh, anyone's saying that, you know, um, not providing additional protection doesn't provide a safer environment for cyclists, right? Uh, it's how you measure that, right? So, uh, what I mentioned was, I don't think, even based on Washout's criteria, that we're ever going to get to call on all ages and abilities, facility just because of the volumes, the driveways, there's still going to be unprotected segments. You know, you've got these areas, I mean, we haven't even dug into, uh, there's several properties that have curb-side waste collections. So we're getting, you know, another thing that we need to dig into with waste management is, you know, how would, how would they approach, um, you know, a, a section of roadway that has protection? Um, you know, in a safe manner, right? So, um, there's all sorts of factors that we're trying to consider. And I think the recommendations that we brought forth with open house were objective. You know, we could objectively say like, this is what we feel, uh, provides that level of traffic stress two, which again, encompasses a much wider, broader spectrum of cyclists from a safety standpoint. Uh, but also isn't just applying, um, you know, something across the project that doesn't really push the needle, right? Uh, so I think what we're trying to understand and figure out is how do we, how do we move forward with this project and, and get H D R, you know, moving with the project? Um, understanding kind of how we want to manage this bill for this project. Because I think as soon as we, you know, make a decision, you know, and, and we're open to whatever that decision is, uh, we just need to manage the cost appropriately, right? Uh, it's our job to manage the cost and make sure we're giving the best, uh, safety improvements to the money to be able to.
That's good. So like my personal opinion to go forward is, and I, you know, say this as both a cyclist that rides all around town myself, and I've ridden Washington, protected, unprotected. And what I think is the vast majority opinion from a lot of the community is any sort of protection is better than none. Um, and that's, that's, I know, I feel that personally. And even if there's gaps in there, even having the occasional bollards, no, it's not going to stop us beating drunk drivers, something like that. But it really does help. It makes me feel safer when I ride. And I think as if I'm, if I'm driving, it makes me pay attention more to make sure there's a bike lane there. So I think what we really do need on the table and the options when we look at alternatives is still that, uh, as much protection as possible, the whole length, um, and yes, there'll be gaps due to driveways and places like that. Um, and if it impacts a small segment of six between Washington and, uh, Warren, um, in terms of the center turn lane, then see what that looks like without a center turn lane there and just, just have that on the table, because.
The cost.
I missed that. Oh, like if there's a small segment between Warren and Washington, where in order to have enough bike lane width, you do have to remove a little bit of center turn lane. I think that should be on the table, like, show us an alternative that has the reasonable level of protection, even with just bollards along the whole length. What does that look like?
Between Warren and Washington?
The whole length of Sixth Street.
Okay.
But, but it just sounds like there's some concerns about squeezing space between Warren and Washington here. So.
Between, yeah, between Warren and Washington, this, I mean, this is, I mean, there's different scenarios there. And we've got on-street parking, so we had an option that kept some on-street parking, an option that removed on-street parking to provide the center to a left turn lane.
Yeah, so, with, and cost, I mean, what I'm hearing, we got three million for construction, a couple hundred thousand for protected bike lanes isn't gonna blow the budget, right?
Yeah, it could be, I mean, it could be with cost as a big factor here.
Can I just say, we have to be careful of saying protected bike lane? Because if we give you a five-foot bike lane or even a six-foot bike lane with a candlestick, you know, vertical element, it's not a separated or protected bike lane. So if it's more protected, I mean, from layman's terms, though, we're not gonna be able to provide a separated or protected bike lane with a five-foot bike lane and a two-foot buffer unless we eliminate the whole, you know, like, I think there's a fair say it holds center turn lane. And that eliminating the center turn lane has safety implications for drivers too, right? Like, that's when you're gonna get road rage, rear enders, you know, that you're gonna have queuing. So this project, when we evaluated it, with the study in twenty one,
twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
Was a three-lane, going from a two-lane to a three-lane with a two-way center left turn lane. That way people can get out of the lane, take a left turn and, and they're not, you know, they're not gonna get rear-ended, they're not holding up traffic. So there's a benefit to the left turn lane that I don't think we should be too quick to disregard.
Fair enough. So like, just making sure we got as many options, keep those options on the table and we get all the pros and cons. If that's the info right now, it's, it's, we got one or two alternatives so far. I think we need number three and four. Look at it all. That's just my, my take.
Okay, Anna?
Thanks. So, congratulations on the grant. Um, I had hoped to talk about the survey at some point, but this is a really packed, um, evening. I'm just gonna say that all of the comments, um, from the open house and from the emails and from people that I meet on the street or at First Friday or at Safeway is protect the bike lanes, the whole length of it. This is what the people want. And I guess I'd like to quickly address something that was buried in here of like, making sure that the bike community doesn't have an outsized presence. And the people I know who have joined with Street Smart or, um, West Sound Cycling have done so because their individual attempts to bike safely have failed. Like, the same reason that people form unions and join unions is because individually they weren't getting where they wanted to. This, I, I, I wanna make sure that we're not thinking of the bike community as people who just like to go out and recreationally bike around. Um, I, I think that's really important because the purpose of this is to link, um, you know, the bike lanes just debush suddenly at Kitsap Way and it's like, oh, you're on your own now, kids. Um, and nothing starts up again until downtown. So this is the missing link. And getting it protected all along that corridor, let's get this part done and let's look at the whole bike lane. Because what this means is we have an opportunity for development all the way from Kitsap Way to the ferry terminal that is not necessarily car-dependent. And that's the big deal. Um.
I didn't understand that last statement. We have an opportunity to do what?
To, well, we are, one of the reasons we're doing this is to foster development. If you have a path to get to work without using a car, then that is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like development that doesn't necessarily need, every household doesn't have to have two or three or four cars.
Got it.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, that was, that was pretty much it. Uh, I, more protection, the better. Um, and I honestly don't know if going down to five foot is going to be a huge deal breaker for bikers. I, I, I don't know. Um, but I do understand that it's unlikely that we can turn Sixth Street with the very large trucks that drive on it all the time into a safe place for three-year-olds to, to ride on their own. Um, but older children, yeah, um, let's, let's make this a, a beautiful gateway. Thanks, hold on.
Okay, Michael?
Again, thanks for all your work on this. Um, so I definitely agree that we need to, you know, put as, as, as much sort of safety as we can. Uh, a question I had is, uh, what does it take to take back the driveway? Like, is that something that we've talked about? I was up on some of the images. Like, I saw somebody that's got two driveways on Sixth Street and one driveway on the corner, you know, the corner street, you know? And so we might not be able to do it for the onset of this project, but, you know, if we think of what we can get done as the start and then we look at ways to continue to build on that, continue to make it safer. I, I definitely think the candlesticks and stuff, as many as we can get are important, uh, kind of like Jeff was alluding. It, it just helps the driver, helps, it's, it's sort of like, you know, education that, that you, you are sharing the road and something's changed and something's different. You know, I know that my neighbors, uh, directly, I live on Sixth, uh, directly across the street, put their garbage, you know, on the sidewalk in the mornings. So, you know, then you've got the garbage things that have to be able to, uh, get across and things like that. So there's, there's gonna be lots of shoes, but one thought is, you know, is, is can we look at, again, maybe not to get this project done, but can we look at reclaiming some of these driveways? Maybe there's a way we could incentivize the property owner. I am sure there's value in that. Uh, but we're also adding a ton of value, I feel, uh, by slowing the wallets down on Sixth Street, uh, for these businesses. So, um, I think that's the biggest thing. I, you know, uh, when I hear about the, the standards, yeah, it'd be great if we were putting a brand-new street in.
Right.
Who, you know, with nothing, I mean, I, uh,
Love it, her foot right away.
You know, I, I'm, I'm kind of just assuming here, but like, you know, I have a retaining wall on Sixth Street and I'm sure I used to have a yard that went down to like a two-lane dirt road, uh, once upon a time. And, you know, we've given and given and given, and I love the idea that, you know, I don't need the land back, but that we're gonna give it back so that the community can use it to ride their bikes and, and commute and, uh, and just, again, slow folks down and, and feel safer. Um, so anyways, I think I've kind of said my thing, but I just, again, would say I support as much as we can, but I get it. If there's, there's not room to put even the candlesticks and then at least we have the bike lane and the, hopefully the, the, you know, the brakes in it, you know, drivers won't feel like it's a free-for-all because there's no candlestick there. They'll, they'll understand, uh, that it's, um, that sharing the road. So, thanks.
So we have Denise online. Go ahead, Denise.
Muted. So I will.
Came here, I hear.
No, actually, I do not have her muted.
She has herself muted, maybe.
It doesn't look like it. Do we have, do we have her mic?
Oh, this, let's try to turn the volume up.
Now?
There we go.
There we go, okay.
Okay, okay. Um, I, I just wanted to command, uh, staff. Nick, the presentation is great. Plenty of visual, you know, it tells us the hotspots. Um, uh, I could tell that it was a different kind of presentation at the public meeting. I just really am impressed with it and I think it solicited some real engagement around this. And I remember a member of the, uh, uh, Planning Commission was at the open house and, uh, uh, he had, we were standing, looking at the level of stress and, and he said, gosh, I'd be, I'd be satisfied, I think, if we got it down to a two. And I, I just wanted to say that, you know, that, that as much, we set the bar really high with our advocacy community and we want to support that. Uh, and yet I also think, um, that we are practical people. Uh, and, uh, we're gonna arrive at a really good solution. I think there's been some great discussions in the Public Works Committee and I want to give a shout out to, to Jane, you know, who's chaired that. Um, and to Councilmember Coughlin, uh, uh, it's been a, some hard conversations, some difficult conversations. But I really see movement and evolution with this. I, I do, Nick, and everybody else from Public Works that's there. Um, thank you, thank you, uh, for this. I'm sure it's not over, uh, but, but I really feel good about where we are with it. So, thanks.
Okay, so, first of all, I want to state, I didn't put a, not putting time deadline on this, it's a very important thing. We gotta get this out. So we're gonna take whatever time it takes. Uh, before we go to this round, do we have any more round two before I ask Nick a question about where we're on? So, Nick, Ned, do you have enough guidance or you need more particulars for us?
Yeah, so, so this was, um, this is the part I think, wanna have, uh, a couple more slides for.
Right, no, I understand, but as far as this, uh,
I think we hear that the width of the bike lanes is like, whatever we can get, maximize the bike lane, maximize candlesticks wherever we can. It's gonna be gaps, it's gonna be issues. Like, we, I think we can work with that.
Okay.
Um, I think, are we proposing some curb coming down Kitsap Way or not? Or is it all candlestick?
Well, we are. So, I mean, again, we're trying to manage the budget as best possible. Like, our hope would be we could get some sort of, um, you know, hard element in, you know, on a, you know, section between, um, uh, Eleventh and, and.
The spot that really needs it.
Montgomery, right, you know, we've got higher speeds coming down.
Yeah, so in terms of, um, I think I struggle with eliminating the two-way left turn lane. I think that is, uh, I think that's a challenge and I'm not sure I'd advise that. I think we can try to maximize bike lane width. It's gonna include the gutter pan. Uh, we can try to, if we can separate, actually separate and actually put a buffer and actually afford some curb somewhere. I think we should be trying to do that, right? Well, I think that's our intent, if we can, and it's gonna be budget constrained, I think. And we don't fully understand that yet. And so we get enough directions to know what the whole picture looks like, right? And then we can start seeing what those costs look like. Um, I think there, you've got some more slides that we need to address that have, you know, some other questions like right turn pockets and things like that.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah, so, I mean, again, um, just to kind of tie a bow on this. I mean, you know, the input we're looking for, consensus we're looking for is really to get us in a position where we can kind of work with H R to kind of formalize. I mean, not nail down a exact, exact scope of work for design that kind of defines the plans that, you know, we can comfortably bring, um, you know, back to town for, uh, contracts and that. So, you know, understand, acknowledge that, you know, there's likely gonna be a lot more decision-making. You know, it's probably gonna continue to be public engagement on the project, so, um, that's gonna continue, but, you know, gonna, again, just kind of record what we're hearing, some of the conflicting, um, you know, desires on the project and, and just make sure, guys, with, compatible.
I think the clarity about vehicle TS two is important too. Like, are we all on the same page about the L T S two for moving forward?
Mm-hmm.
On the Wash, based on the Wash thought.
Based on the standards, yeah.
So that, uh, is a big hurdle, I think, that helps us.
So, uh, yeah, Michael, go ahead. So I just, oh no, kind of defend Jeff's idea of center turn lane. Where are we? We certainly don't need a center turn lane, I don't feel, from Pacific to Washington.
Right.
So, you know, so then we're only talking the next, you know, the block, I mean, shouldn't.
Yeah, I think I was thinking, uh, like, between, like, when you said, uh, Washington to Warren, I think of Washington to Warren as a whole different streetscape than I think of Warren to Eleventh, right?
Right, yeah.
Like Warren to Eleven and Warren to Naval, Warren to Calo, that is a very busy, high-volume street. The, the street volume, speed, uh, availability of parking, um, changes when you get east of Warren. So I think we definitely can look at that quieter section.
Yeah.
But I think there are sections where you don't want to give that up, where you have higher volumes.
I think, I think that was a great idea, because I'd, I'd also say to give it up, to keep some parking too. We, when we're busy here, people need to park. And so I, you know, I think that's.
Some of that folding.
Great, okay. I just wanted to, just.
Okay, yeah, that was helpful. Like, I, I'm not trying to give you the impression that we have to have it everywhere on the whole corridor, but there are like three distinct corridor sections. I think the Kitsap Way section is a high-speed, high-volume, um, downhill racetrack. And then you have like Calo or Montgomery to, to Warren that's, uh, got its own different flavor. And then it gets quieter once you get east of Warren. So I think we need to kind of consider those three segments.
Yeah.
From that perspective, which I think we are doing, right, Nick?
Yeah.
We have to remember that the parade comes down Sixth Street too, for unfortunate.
Yeah.
So the bike lanes would provide more, uh, uh, chair, chair spectators.
Festival street.
Yes. All right, let's go on to right turn lanes, Nick.
Um.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just, so I just wanted to make sure this is our consensus, is we want as much protection as possible along the whole corridor.
Okay, that's it. All right, uh, so, moving on to separate vehicle return lane. So as part of the initial design content phase, uh, updated vehicle operations analysis was conducted in, um, all of the major intersections of the project. Um, that analysis also looked at the impacts of providing or not providing separate vehicle return lanes to intersections. Um, of the nine intersections evaluated, right turn lane only recommended to the intersection of Naval, intersection of Warren. Um, at Naval, uh, the eastbound right turn lane was recommended, uh, due to the Naval Gate queuing, uh, operations in the morning. Uh, westbound, uh, six that Naval was recommended to, uh, mitigate, uh, projected twenty forty-four, um, volumes which, uh, put the intersection, uh, level of service into an F, just failed. And then westbound at Warren, uh, was required to mitigate, uh, intersection, uh, level service F in the P M, uh, connected based on current, uh, travel, uh, travel volumes. The, uh, existing separate right turn lane at Wyco and Park Avenue were removed from all the concepts we presented in the house. They were not being operationally necessary. Uh, several of the comments received requested, uh, no separate right turn lanes be provided, especially at Naval Avenue due to the creative conflict with, uh, those classes.
Um, that wasn't the only reason. The big reason was pedestrians have a much longer crossing.
Correct.
It's not just bicycles.
So, um, some of the, again, um, similar to how I presented this slide on the bike lane protection, some of the considerations, um, again, is looking at, you know, substandard, uh, vehicle operations. Uh, we all know that substandard off, uh, vehicle operations can lead to, um, negative driver behaviors, uh, during congestion periods. Um, uh, potentially would impact, uh, right away acquisition at Naval Avenue specifically. So, uh, the decision really has a huge impact on the project, uh, from a scope and budget perspective, depending if we acquire a right away or not. And then we have the potential to, uh, you know, again, uh, eliminate, you know, that mixing, that unconfronted and, as Jane mentioned, you know, kind of try to shorten, uh, the, uh, that's great crosswalks there.
Can we clarify level of service for a bike versus the intersection?
Yeah, sure. So when we look at the, uh, vehicle operations, uh, intersection, um, we look at the delays and, um, those delays are captured from like an approach standpoint. So, you know, say if you're traveling westbound on Sixth Street, you know, what your delay would be, uh, say at Naval. Um, and then once you look at all the approaches on the intersection, those are kind of aggregated into an overall intersection level of service. So you could have a level of service F on the approach, but your overall intersection still would have, could have a, uh, level of service E, for example. So, um, you know, when we say, um, you know, an approach level of service versus an intersectional level of service, that would be, we mean, um, you know, the, the operations of, of a specific approach versus the operations of an overall intersection, more generalized.
Does everybody understand level of service and what that means?
Yeah.
Okay, correct. A lot of people don't, so.
So one thing you have up there, it says that. The Growth Management Act is saying that we can't have substandard peak hour vehicle operations. And that's really rough.
Well, it's carried through the comp plan. So. If you look at the transportation, the Growth Management Act requires our comp planning process for growth. And maintaining level of service is part of that. And if you look at the W A C, which I printed. Uh, you, you're required to adopt a level of service for your arterials, which these are arterials. And council adopted a level of service E for the arterials in, uh. Uh, transportation element of the twenty sixteen comp plan. And it still looks like that in the draft transportation element that we're working on right now. So the requirement is that we, uh, adopt a level of service standard, which we have done. And that's what we, you know, are following. But it is E for arterials. I don't think it adopts a level of service standard for all of the other classifications and neighborhood streets and things like that. But for the arterials for Naval and Six, right? We have a level of service standard that was adopted by this council for the comp, comp plan process. And when we say required by growth management, well. The W A C is written to accommodate, you know, around the Growth Management Act and the W A C requires that we have a level of service standard. So that's. And there's a lot of semantics.
But there's also, um, council can decide that certain intersections. They could change the level of service.
And I think you're supposed to have a process established for that, which we also don't have.
Um, well, we have, we have an ordinance right now. That sets it so we could have a new ordinance that alleviates some intersections.
An ordinance that sets the transportation element of the comp plan?
No, it sets a level of service. We have a specific ordinance.
So that ordinance is for concurrency. And does everybody know what concurrent, anyone ask that question? So that ordinance is established so that we can have for developers. We have a baseline level of service that we hold developers to when we evaluate their transportation impacts. And let's say they come in and they're gonna move. Sixth and Naval to a level of service F. Well, then there's a concurrency requirement and concurrency really means. They're gonna bring, they're gonna do the work or pay, you know, to. Improve the intersection capacity to bring it back to a minimum of an E. So the ordinance that you're talking about, it's really about our concurrency evaluation work development. So if you go into that ordinance and you change that to an F. Then what you're really doing is making it so developers don't have any concurrency requirement. When they're working on their development projects. And Shane, correct me.
They haven't built anything, they haven't built anything in the past twenty years. Um, and you have the developers.
That's not accurate. They have, but it's. I'm not saying our concurrency process is great. I'm not defending it. I'm not bragging about it, but it's what we have, right? And there have been improvements that have been constructed.
And we've accepted, yeah, we've accepted developer mitigation funds to be able to construct. It's because they like to have that be on, on us to instruct them, not necessarily.
Well, and an example would be kids up transit on Ween Way, but if they had to construct that intersection as a concurrency requirement, so.
Yeah.
But there's not a lot of it.
No, there isn't.
I agree.
Not by private development.
And, and the reason for that is the level of service requirement is it's really hard to meet that here, here in the city, so.
So fundamentally, the level of service that we designed to is coming out of the transportation element of the comp plan. And then that other place that we talked about it in the ordinance, it's really related to development. So just be aware of that and, and that might be a whole different Public Works Committee.
Could be.
Yeah. Right.
What is? Quick, yeah, quick follow-up, which is. Here, these volumes are, uh, twenty twenty-three and estimated twenty forty-four.
Okay.
Um. So what is the difference between the twenty twenty-three and the twenty forty-four? I mean, you're planning for the unestimated future, yeah?
Yeah, that's, that's, so this is all, um, done in alignment with the transportation element update. So, uh, traffic modeling and, and. Land use, uh, growth projections. Um, develop, uh, travel demand.
Yeah.
That's the, the twenty thousand people that are supposed to come into Birmingham by twenty thirty-four, that's what.
And the, and the level of service F and the second bullet, the westbound enable. That's the, again, that's the twenty twenty-four volume that's projected.
Well, we've, we've never, we've never once met the Growth Management Act projections for growth at Birmingham.
Ever.
Ever.
But we have planning policies and a comp plan that says we're going to, the council's gonna review and. Buy into, or I guess we need to start with scratch. Right, like P S R C assigns the numbers for our growth that we're planning to. So we're sort of. Putting it all about for that.
Hey, Nick, I proceed. Okay, go ahead. Uh, on the westbound at Naval, uh, turn pocket, that seems like something we could. Wait on, we could, you know, go without it. And maybe in, you know, ten years, look to see if we need to acquire right away to put a turn pocket in there. But.
I think, I think we're open to that, right?
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I, I, you know.
I'd, I'd almost say the same about, uh, the, the eastbound, uh, in, onto, onto Naval. I don't, I don't think I'm up early enough to see the traffic that, that gate gets, but it's also, and I saw their comments that they submitted, um. But, you know, that's, that's not their main gate. You know, that's.
It's very accurate, though.
I agree, that's great. It's the one I used, uh, as retiree, uh, you know, it's only open Monday through Friday. And not the, you know, not twenty-four hours, like a big main, the main.
It's not dictated by level of service. But you have a pretty big staple here, which is excessive amount of traffic that. Right? I don't know what that means.
Can you go back?
Oh.
So, um.
That's all.
Thank you.
You know, I think your argument is sound. You could get rid of it. Would I get rid of it? I wouldn't. I mean, we know we have an impact from a gate and it's, and it's hard for us to model. Like the gate operation queuing and impact from that gate operation isn't something that's easy for us to model.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I think that they are a big enough, uh, partner in the city that maybe want to accommodate. Uh, you know, that right turn pocket. And I'll say this. Our first funding, you know, for construction application that we're gonna do right now, we're planning a D C F application. That means the base commander supports the project. So, you know, it's something to consider.
That's Naval, that's not Six.
Yeah, that's Naval, that's Naval, yeah.
And if we don't get it, we're renaming the street.
But, but if you.
Plan Six.
And then you go for funding for Naval, I think it's not a very. Distanced gap between that budget, right? So. That's gonna, that's our approach right now for funding, when we come to Public Works Committee to talk about how we want to fund Naval. The first one is a D C F application, which we just got one for the Central Birmingham Forest Main. If we can be successful with that, that'll be a huge benefit to that corridor, so.
So it's anecdotal, but when I used to drive my car to catch the ferry, there was quite a bit of built up on Naval and going, going taking that right. There was. That's anecdotal, but I remember that. So. You guys would have the studies. I assume you have some kind of numbers you, you look at. Or maybe not, but I'm telling you, there is.
Like we hear about it, we don't.
Yes, it's there.
I'm gonna have to start getting up at five again. So.
Can we get coffee? Just sit out there, chairs.
So, um. There's a national movement to stop right turns on red, which is, I mean, people want a right turn lane because they think they can bypass the light. And I personally would like to see no right turn on red throughout the city, even before that becomes national. So if we. Eliminate right turns on red, do we need right turn lanes?
I'm, I'm not the one who. Thank you. Shane, or. We eliminate right turn on red.
Mm-hmm.
Do we still need right turn on? I think there's a queuing issue that you mentioned through about the, the, the turn lanes are a capacity.
Yeah. Improvement, so it provides additional capacity, uh, and operational improvements at the intersection. It's, if you, you know, a right turn on red is, is limiting the movement which, uh. Actually limits capacity is what it does. So you'd still need it for a capacity standpoint. Um, so the two different functions.
Yeah, you almost, uh, and again, you know, you have to model those out, right? Just, it's all worth it, all this, but, you know, if you've got a no right turn on red and a separate right turn lane. You know, you have less vehicles, uh, making that right turn. So you almost need a longer right turn line to, to rest the capacity here, else you're gonna starve out the. Capacity on the re-lane.
So we're gonna talk about this with Naval.
Yeah.
This is gonna come up with Naval.
Mm-hmm.
Or the vainer at the table at that point. So maybe we want to table that. But if you go to our recommendations, is that where you went? Nick?
Uh, yeah, and this was just showing a couple of the, the right turn concepts, I think, you know, seen the concepts, you've seen those. So. Uh, our current, so, I mean, again, going to our current recommendation, kind of pausing, getting, uh, input from the council is. Is we would like to recommend deferring that westbound right turn lane at Naval.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, meets the intersection operation levels. You know, it's something that we'll actually continue to monitor. Um, uh, obviously, you know, any intersection, traffic demand changes, you know, with the, with that. Um, we still recommend providing that eastbound, uh, combination right turn lane at Naval, uh, to, to mitigate the A M operations. Um, and I say combination right turn lane because. We were really trying to avoid, uh, acquiring right away. So preliminary cost, if, if we acquire right away and. Sort of, you know, the separate right turn lanes. I mean, it can be upwards of eight hundred thousand dollars or so, once you factor in the signals and private property impacts and. And, uh, shortfalls, things like that. So we're really, first solution that eliminates need to. Acquire a right away so you can move all that additional money into other safety improvement. Uh, and we're also recommending the westbound, uh, right turn lane at Warren Avenue, again, directly tied to the, the intersection operation. Meeting our policy requirements. Um, I've got a couple of, um, options here and then kind of talk about these. I mean, if we don't provide. Uh, the, the right turn line at Naval, you know, um, you just have to acknowledge that there is gonna. Potentially likely be, uh, issues, spillover issues from the queuing that, you know, uh, could create other traffic related issues. So. Uh, that's really hard for us to.
Cut through.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and again, that, that scenario is really hard for us to model because that. Backup is all dependent on naval gate operations, right? So, you know. It's, it's just really.
I think you saw in the email today, like a five-minute delay is a sixty car.
Yep.
Right, based on what Allison said. So if it's ten minutes, a hundred, like it, it gets bigger and bigger. And I think. It's when they do those things that we actually see the cars queued all the way back up to Sixth Street and around the corner. And I do see that sometimes. I come in at seven thirty. So I don't, I'm not here at five or five thirty either, but I do see it sometimes when I'm coming through. And I think that's a function of gate operation and.
Mm-hmm.
Having to stall things for some reason.
What is the, um, A M peak?
The time?
Yes, the time.
When we, then. I don't have that chart. I mean, I could. Found all the intersection now.
Naval.
Yeah, okay.
Naval and Six. If you could find out what the A M peak is and let me know that, it would be great. I think so too.
Seven or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
On that, on your door, Mike. Get lawn chairs.
Is that Naval and Six?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. All right, go, Michael, and then Jeff. Um, Jane, when Jane mentioned no turn on red, I mean, thinking, and the question I was gonna ask was. Uh, I was looking for the, some of the concerned points of the turns, but, but I'm also wondering. Is there some also technology solution to help manage a right turn? You know, whether, whether there's no turn on red, there's a specific signal, we also stop bikes. There are. You, there's not a ton of pedestrians in that intersection.
Yeah, they.
But if we do this, that, the goal would be to have more pedestrians also. So. You know, uh, and it, it's funny, I just realized that I use that turn, that right turn all the time. But, uh, but I. You know, but I'm just wondering if this, anyways, this could, I don't need an answer right now, but I was just wondering if there are. Some technology things where we could, you know, really actively, you know, see the cars in the queue for the right turn and. Maybe the bike signals red and the crosswalks red and the turn is green and then anyways, so. That's all I can say. Jeff?
No, same, same thought. We touched on this at the December Public Works meeting where. Uh, I feel like there's a possibly an option C, I started drawing on the whiteboard and I think we agreed I'd be, I'll be smarter, but. There's a kind of a nice diagram sent in at one of the public comments in the packet. And this is the, because the main worry with the right turn lanes is you get traffic and bikes crossing, right? And then you get. Conflict points and that's bad. And, um, this kind of mirrors, I mean, ones I, I biked in Seattle and Victoria and some other places where. You don't have the conflict points, but it does require having a separate bike light. So. The bike can, and I can show it to everybody at once, but this is.
Hey. Oh, my God.
It's not coming up, uh, one eleven, there we go.
Thanks.
We're gonna talk about that later.
Okay. Yeah, anyway, so I think just, if we can better understand this through the Public Works or another presentation, see if this is an option, I. I think the construction money, we have it, so we can do bike lights and then. You can have the cars turn, like Michael said, well, the bikes wait and then vice versa.
You're talking about Naval or, and Six.
Naval at Six.
Any, I guess, I'm talking in general, when we're talking about. Turnbikers anywhere.
Well, I'm, I guess, I'm hoping with this conversation, we get enough. Definition of council perspective, that we can start moving forward with something that's, right?
Yeah.
I don't think that we're gonna accommodate that on Sixth Street in terms of the dedicated. Like protection and you can, I could be wrong about that.
The, the only way that we'd be able to, again, you know, avoid right away and, and be able to consider, I think that's. Like the, what NAC they call dedicated intersection. Um, no, it's, it's dedicated, dedicated intersection is. Uh, if we didn't provide the eastbound right turn lane and we don't provide the west, so basically no right turn line in either direction. That's the only way that we'd have any kind of space to look at providing those upper bike lanes. With some sort of vertical element. And then trying to figure out how we could get the turning radius to be compatible. You know, current Naval, uh, roadway and then also compatible with the upcoming, uh, Naval Avenue project.
Yeah, I.
So there's gonna be a nexus here with Naval Avenue.
Right.
Some slides that we can maybe revisit this on that.
Yeah, I think that will be clear, uh, how we can.
Yeah, I feel like there's, maybe I'm just feeling like there's an option that's not been, that I don't fully understand. That you could have the turn lane without the conflict points, without the bike lane and the turn lane crossing, that essentially. The turn, sorry, sorry, the turn pocket.
Yeah.
The turn pocket's there without having the conflict. It just requires having a bike light at the intersection.
Right, I cover that when we talk about Naval.
Okay.
So I think I'm just clearer than.
I gotta keep that on the table.
May even have some of what you're showing there on it.
All right, Anna, and then we need to get to the ask, make sure you have clarity from council and move on. Okay.
So the, the, uh, eastbound right turn lane, that just seems like if you build it, they will come. Um.
At Naval?
Uh, on, if you're, yeah, if you're heading eastbound on Six, then you come to Naval where right now there is no right turn lane. But if, if the, if the one hour, up to one hour queuing is a function of gate operation. There is nothing that we can do about that. If we build a right turn pocket. Other people will go, oh, this moves a little faster if I go down Six. And then they will go there and they will use that right turn pocket and the queuing will still occur. It's queuing that occurs for up to and no more than an hour a day, many days, not all days. Is that correct?
It's the A M peak. So, yeah, it's an hour, hour and a half, and it's based on gate operations. But you have to remember. Right now you have two through lanes. So that right through lane. Acts like a really, really long right turn pocket that queues up for quite some distance. And the right turn pocket that we're talking about providing is absolutely minimal. It's like two or three cars of storage or something, I think. It's not gonna save the world, but it, it leaves you a single through lane that might not be in fact, might not be impacted. By the cars that are trying to turn right and are stuck from the queue coming up from the gate. So it's a. I don't know if it, um. Is a perfect solution, but it's something that accommodates, you know, keeping through traffic moving. Because once it, once it backs up in that right turn pocket and into the one through lane. Then all of Sixth Street gets backed up and you're gonna have everyone scattering, trying to figure out how to get past that bottleneck. So.
So do we need a through and left turn lane at each leg? So do we need a through and left turn lane at each leg? Can they be shared?
I don't know. That's a question I don't know an answer to.
Yeah, because I mean, the whole goal is short crosswalks.
There's a lot of right and left turn volume that we'll talk about, we'll talk about naval uh. That you'll see, and the numbers are pretty big. Some of those great, like fifty hour left turns, some of them are like two hundred fifty cars an hour for left turns. That's a significant amount of cars and the right turns are like a hundred and seventy. You'll see that on when we talk about naval.
It just seems awful that all the residents who actually live in Bremerton. Will have less safe intersections because of one hour of gate operations for the Navy.
I have another question. I can't comment on that. I mean, what we're trying to do is balance capacity, head safety, bike safety. Uh, trying to balance cost, we're trying to balance constrained right away. We're trying to not do reconstruction, you know. Beyond, especially on six, like reconstruction, we're not trying to reconstruct. Six, right? All that's happening right now with phase three, we're trying to have a corridor that you can come in and rechanalize and. Um, try to maximize the benefits to all those groups. So, and the Navy is one of them, right? And transit is one of them. Like so.
So can I just ask my second and final question? So you could construct this without a right turn pocket, either eastbound or westbound at six and naval, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so I mentioned this is important, it is important, but this meeting is starting to feel like a public works meeting. So let's get to the ask. And then we need to get on to the agenda bill items because we're gonna talk about naval later on.
Do you have any other slides or you're done?
Uh, really, just to highlight the the cause, so um just highlighting that if we. Don't wire right away at naval, you know, essentially we feel comfortable and we can provide any of the alternatives we presented at the open house meeting. As soon as we um acquire a right away at naval, uh that really, uh that limits our funding availability for improvement. So at that point, we're really just in a bare bones project. Uh, you know, no uh vertical. Uh, features in the bike lane, no green pavement markings. I mean, it's really just. You know, kind of a bare bones rechannelization, which, you know, would really be hard for us to, uh, you know, feel comfortable supporting. You know, uh, what we're trying to achieve here. So uh, just kind of, again, putting into perspective the significant impact of. Costs associated with naval avenue intersection.
How long is the grant good for that we may be getting?
Yeah, that's how the budget goes with the state.
Right.
Yeah, it, well, I didn't get the impression that it was super aggressive. Um, I don't know, Shane, I mean, it's the same. They, the more bucket of money is like a state brought to schools, but it's state funded, it's not federal funded, so there's a little bit.
And and sometimes they do make these federal funded, we won't find out until we get a grant letter, but it's state funded, we have some flexibility on time. Uh, we don't have a time commitment to to spend the money. Um, but there is an expectation that we spend the money within a certain, you know, within a reasonable time once we get.
They want to see constant.
They wanna see constant progress on it. Um, but it's more flexible, uh, which is, which is great for state funding. Um, but if it does, and the off chance that it does come in with federal funds, uh, then uh. Which I don't think it will, but there is a chance then there'd be some potential time requirements on that.
Well, it makes sense that naval get built first and may pay for this intersection. For the safety of. I don't wanna see six street that we've made such a huge contribution to. Just be. Lowballed because of the intersection of naval and six.
The problem with that timing is that we have, it would say that the state figures out the budget and this grant awarded. We do not have a construction grant or we have a plan of applying for grants, but we don't have guarantee or a. Grant in hand for construction of naval. So we could be in a situation where we're funded for six, we're still not for naval, right?
Yeah, and I think the other consideration is that um we still have a long period of uh right away phase on naval avenue, but we'll get into it a little bit here. But right now, um, you know, it's gonna be about a two year period and assuming that we can get construction funding, we're gonna be a couple of years out of. Constructing naval, whereas I think Nick is on track potentially with maybe the end of this year, we need to. Done design on this project. So the timing doesn't work very well with the two projects. So that's something we'll have to.
But naval still has the budget to buy the right of way. That may be needed at this intersection to leave money for us to get better improvements on six. If Nick doesn't have to buy a right of way, right? Let's pretend it's a half a million dollars.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, we have, Nick would have different right away requirements on six street than we have on naval. Um, so we do have budget enabled uh to acquire right away, but it's for turn pockets on naval. That are different than what Nick was looking at for six street. So.
So can I just um, just for clarity for me, this would be great for me. So we've asked about no right turn on red. I think that's something that we need to push off till later, like the national, if it's nationally required. Guess what? Everywhere in the city is gonna have no right turn on red. I don't think we wanna hang up this project while we try to figure out. What the impacts are on that on this project. So I would hopefully. Get a um some sort of consensus from council that that's not a deal breaker that we have to hold into this. And then the other thing that I think is important is if you go back to your slide for our current recommendation, it's the. Um, eastbound at naval and the westbound at Warren. Are we good with that? Or like you asked the question, hey, we don't have to build it, you know, uh, eastbound at naval. I recommend that we do. I think it's good practice. Honestly, it's probably good practice for us to build the right turn lane uh at naval that's westbound because we're gonna have construction money. And we see a problem potentially coming, but I think we can also wait to see what happens, right? I'm not real strong about that. But we're out of three recommended uh, three right turn pockets we're recommending to. Are we comfortable with that?
So I'm comfortable with it. I see this as a compromise and I can see valid reasons for why you do that. I know now everybody's being satisfied. Uh, going one way or the other, but to me it's a compromise and it makes sense. So I'm comfortable with it. Cause risk.
Jeff, do we need to eliminate an option right now? Can we not keep both on the table? I think that's where I'm.
We need to start moving forward with a, like, what we don't want is multiple alternative analysis process where we keep looking at alternatives. Um, so I guess you tell me the answer to that.
Yeah, I guess. So I don't think we had a no turn pocket alternative on the table that we can stare at. Right for naval, if I remember the open house.
The impact is the queue.
Yeah.
Like, you know, that we're talking about eastbound on naval, turning right to go to the, into the Chippyard Gate. The impact that's hard for us to model, that we know will get a queue back there at time, whether we should provide a right turn pocket at that location. And it's not like, it's not level of service. It's not taking us to an F until it does, right? But it's like, we have anecdotal information and we know that there's gonna be impacts from that that we think. We should be providing right turn pocket. So our recommendation is that we do that. And I don't know, I don't know what else we would evaluate other than we would show you the lane that doesn't have a right turn pocket, right?
So it looks like you would get one, two, three, maybe four cars?
Yeah, I think that's max three probably.
So.
Yep.
So they're gonna block the lane anyway if the, if the Navy isn't able to operate their gate correctly.
But.
It's, it's gonna block it. I mean, if that's.
It's gonna be large things that happen, like somebody is gonna get up there and see it stop and you're gonna go past and they're gonna kind of cut through the neighborhood. To try to go around that and get back to Burwell to come in left on Burwell, right? Like, there's gonna be, there's weird things that happen when it gets to that point, but at least we provided. The minimal that we thought we could. That's, I guess, my best pitch for that. But. If this, like, if right now you guys say, hey, we don't want that right turn pocket. That gives us some clarity to go do something. I don't recommend that, but if that's what we're hearing tonight, then we have some clarity to move forward, right?
Yeah.
And it would be helpful.
Yeah, and then, and um, I guess as far as what, you know, what the alternatives, alternatives would look like without the right turn line. I mean, essentially. You would gain space for, you know, a a minimal buffer for the bike lane, between the bike lane and travel lane, which. You know, again, if we're gonna get flexible.
You would, you would shorten up the crosswalk by ten and a half feet.
Yep, yeah, definitely. I mean, from.
We're not widening the road, but.
Yeah.
Widening the crosswalk.
We are, they're, they're buying right, they're buying right away.
We're not changing the curbs on six street.
Right.
We're bringing in bike lanes. So if we now on one side have a shared. Like bike lane uh right turn lane. But the thing that keep keeping in mind, when we say that. It's only for a peak time in the morning, that's the only time that, that that's gonna be, that's also the window where it's gonna be the most issues with conflict.
But page.
I think most of the day it'll, it'll operate.
I think you're right.
Okay.
I think we're, we recognize that this is an AMP problem and it's a gate operations. Right? And we can't model it very well, but we know there's gonna be an issue there. And so the question is, we want to accommodate that. With a minor treatment and or do we not want to? And I think Jane, you're right, that you can narrow up the. You know, you narrow it up for the crossing. If you don't put it in, um, our recommendation is to put it in. And I'm asking with clarity if we're comfortable with that or not.
No, here's another question.
Yeah.
Does the bike lane have to go in between the through lane and the right turn lane? Because that is extremely uncomfortable.
I think you're gonna hear yes from us from that data.
So see how bike lane where it's, it's marked green, right?
Yeah.
So what they're, the bike riders are forced to go in between two lanes. They have to go in between the right lane and the through lane. But the other option is, is that you keep the bikes at the curb.
But then you've got, you've got bikes trying to go straight and cars trying to turn and that's.
That's why you have a bike signal like you do on Washington and six.
So the reason for the bike lane being between the right turn line and through lane is the bikeless position themselves. Um, you know, kind of, that's why it's called through lane, they can position themselves, you know, so you don't have that conflict at the. Intersection. So you ride if you have to the right of the right turn lane. And you try to mitigate that right hook by having a bike station or some sort of.
Maybe we need to move on. I'm not sure we're gonna get that consensus.
And that's why I feel like.
We're looking at the bottom one right now, though, is, is.
Bottom is what we would currently recommend is that combination, and this is similar to what we have on Kitsap way, it's several intersections.
The top one is a right way.
It's pretty scary there.
Yeah.
My concern with.
See a lot of people.
With not doing any turn lane. And then maybe looking at in the future, having to put it in is, like, I feel like. The poses like a compromise, can we, can we try to share this lane, try to share some space? And if we see that doesn't work, we can also do, uh, we can, that can be a different project, but to acquire. Uh, right away and do the safer, safer version. Uh.
Yeah, we've covered a lot of ground and I don't, I don't. So what I'm hearing is you'd like to see what it looks like, a configuration of what it looks like either way. Is that.
Sounds like we're going back to public parks.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna offer mine, which is, I, I don't think either of these right turn lanes at naval are a good idea. Understand that we have a policy that requires that you mitigate at Warren, but I don't think either of these are necessary. To accommodate a one hour problem, that this isn't really gonna fix. It's like we'll spend a lot of money on right away acquisitions. Just to show willing. Like, we tried. Um, you know, kind of like you throw the duvet over the sheets. It's like I tried to make it. It, it's, it's a lot of money for increased unsafety of cyclists.
Okay, so point taken, we're gonna move on. Thank you, gentlemen. I will see some of you later on. Tonight. And uh, by the way, I think I may wanna move the playground equipment up before we get to the naval avenue, okay?
Oh, good.
So, cause uh, the rest of us, um, what was the deal about the car turning into a pumpkin or some kind of thing? Okay, now we're gonna go to uh item B one. This is mayor. Confirm appointment of Tia Hudson to the Arts Commission. I. I also wanted to let council know I did remove some items from this agenda thing. One of it was our. Our goals and stuff, because I knew this was gonna be a long, and this is very important. Again, I'll stress that. Uh, but. Let's um, if we can, let's be brief on some of these items and realize we've got naval haven't discussed. So. Mayor, appointment of Ms. Hudson to the Arts Commission.
Yes, good evening, council. Um, so yes, I'm requesting confirmation uh for the appointment of Tia Hudson. To a vacant arts commission.
You guys know Tia Hudson is our current poet laureate. She does the typewriter poems outside of Volca every first Friday. She's been rigorous about giving poetry readings all through her, her two term, two term tenure, three, three term tenure. Um, she's good people. I think this is a great idea.
Any other comments? Hey, consent? Thank you, mayor.
Here, if you want.
There you go.
Heavy lift, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, next item, item B two, which is the interlocal cooperative agreement with Kitsap County for housing incarcerated individuals. We have enforced Lieutenant Ryan Efferman, Efferman, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Always seem to get landed at this one.
I know. This one's a little different. So this agreement, again, protects the incarceration of prisoners in Kitsap County jail. Generally addressing hostile inmates arrested on Bremerton Municipal Court charges. Replaces the prior agreement which was executed in two thousand eighteen, and for the last several years, we've had amendments to that. Importantly, this agreement represents a significant increase, about thirty percent, in the daily bed rate for incarcerated individuals. So it raises it from a hundred and fifty seven dollars a day to two hundred and four dollars. It also requires the city to pay for certain medical costs not covered by the county's contract with their third party healthcare provider. Should be noted that the prior rate uh that remained stagnant since two thousand twenty one. The new agreement, which is identical to that being signed by the other municipalities in the county. Reflects the rising costs for ID services, particularly the increased expenses for healthcare that the counties incurring. Uh, Kitsap provided a breakdown of some of these costs and and they've increased by about three hundred percent since two thousand eighteen. And the likely continued rise, they gave us an estimate for the next few years. So I'd anticipate that the amendments to this agreement will, will reflect that.
Okay, any questions from the council?
Consent, consent.
So I was checking, so it's only two thousand budgeted for twenty twenty five. So is it an increase of two thousand for the total cost for this whole thing?
It's only ten days.
Yeah.
Or you asked me what the, what the budget amount is for two thousand twenty five?
Oh, yeah, I was looking at the fiscal impacts that have just under two thousand that was budgeted for twenty twenty five.
I, I believe, I thought two million was budgeted for twenty.
Yeah, yeah, it's two million.
So it. The period is supposed to be a.
That makes a lot more sense.
Yes.
Yeah.
Freakly, it could be. That's it.
Okay.
And how many people are arrested?
I, I actually looked into how many people are in there in an average day and how much it costs in average day. It's, it's extraordinarily expensive. I mean, currently over six thousand dollars a day. But, you know, there's, and and that gets worked out. It's not just a, you know, it's not just a single person. If we arrest on a warrant, there's a warrant for, say, someone else in the municipal. Split up, you know, there's half days and whatever, but it's very.
Who provides the healthcare at the jail?
They have a third party contractor. I'm not sure who their current one is. I can look into that for you. And there's, there's very few providers that will actually do that. And it's become extraordinarily expensive for them.
I wonder if it's contract peninsula health would do this.
Okay, how are we gonna treat this? Consent? Okay, thank you, lieutenant. Next, for the next two items, we have managing engineer Janelle Hitch for items B three and B four. They're very similar. Item B three is the resolution to prove provision of wastewater utility. Services to nineteen ten Southwest Cook Road. Right, Janelle?
Secretary, I just wanted to bring up a couple of figures.
By the way, Denise, I'm, I look over to my right every once in a while, but just please speak up if I don't see your hand raised.
I will. Thanks. Um, so as you mentioned, there's.
Yes, please.
So I've got two items that are very similar, um, they both. Are asking me at request first, water service to locations. Because of V M C fifteen O three, O four O, just beyond city limits, um. Uh, the policy, general policy is that, uh, property located outside the city limit. And it's annexed into the city before wastewater utility services. There are two exceptions under, um, parents need, um, one is for. Uh, annexation not feasible and the second is for failed, failed system. Uh, under this first item, we have a failed system at, uh, Cook Road and, uh. Uh, so we had a request from the owner to get sewer serviced and, um. Like I said, this one's outside, uh, city limits. It's also outside our service area and the outside the urban growth area. Um, and, uh. The, uh, the health district did provide a letter that's in the packet, uh, saying that the subject system had failed and, uh, was incapable of. Um, and that the connection, uh, would be necessary to provide basic safety with any environmental. Lines. Um, and also, uh, this one under the third item that you need to be able to. Uh, consider this is that the property, um, uh. Is financially sus- sustainable for rural, rural density. So we are able to serve this and not have. Financial, um, problems with it. The, um. The owner would be required, required to extend this remain for about two hundred and fifty feet and then provide us, uh, they'll give us that. And then make the connection and pay the general. Uh, so we recommend, uh, providing this, uh, that we, uh, allow them without annexing.
Okay, any questions?
Well, we had a long discussion about these two in public works and they really are different. Um, this one, I mean, they're gonna lose their house if they don't have sewer, but. I'm curious why the county is allowing. Houses to be built on property so small that there's no set aside land for when their septic fails. And is there anything we can do about that?
I, I believe that the county health department now requires that they have a reserve area for any new. Being built, so if they have.
Or if they're doing land divisions or anything, like they can't sell part of their land to the neighbor or or anything, right? It looks like they did.
It, it is, he says that he appears. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, this one I, I don't have. Any issue with. I mean, they're gonna lose their house if they don't have sewer.
Right, it's no cost to the city.
And they'll pay one and a half times the sewer rate too.
Any other questions or concerns on that one?
Yeah, just checking on, um, it's two hundred and fifty foot extension.
Approximately, I just did.
More or less, and it's financially sustainable. That was it.
How do we treat this item? Consent is okay, then we'll move on to item B four, which is similar resolution. To approve provision of wastewater utility service thirteen properties on Sherman Heights Road.
This one's different.
Go ahead, Janelle.
Okay, so yeah, this one is different. Sorry, this doesn't look very big, but, um, this is in your packet also, uh, we've got each one fifty eight. Um, so, in this case, um. Sherman Heights, uh, the properties, the thirteen properties are, uh. Outside city limits, but within the urban growth area and within our wastewater service area. Uh, and it was in the twenty fourteen wastewater. Uh, and because it's outside the city limits, it requires annexation. Um, and, uh, the coach provides for an exemption if annexation is not feasible. So, uh, I worked with, uh. Community development and, uh, did an analysis and, uh, um, showing here. Um, the area of the properties is in orange and, uh. The annexation area being considered is outlined in pink, um, per the Kitsap County planning policies, uh. And annex property if it's contiguous to the city limits and the thirteen parcels. Um, uh, are are not contiguous to the city limits. So, so they have larger study area was needed. So, um, the properties in green on this figure are, uh, already have outside utility agreements with the city. So they already have the sewer service. And, uh, the proposed area in that. Think that's outlined in pink is two hundred and one acres with three hundred and fifty nine parcels and the asset value is a hundred and eighteen million dollars. Uh, sixty percent of that property value is needed for annexation and, uh, that would be about seventy one one dollars. The existing O U A is plus fifty parcels. The value is sixty percent of one million dollars. So just below that sixty percent threshold. So, um. It's at your discretion whether to, uh, provide, uh, the wastewater service, um. Again, they would, uh, provide an extension to the, the sewer service in this area. And, uh, we obtained that, that, uh, that area. So the financial situation is. Very similar. I'd also like to point out that the neighboring property just went through this process about three years ago. And that was approved as well. They haven't developed yet, so that area was not included in this, the. Study, it's not shown in green yet, but, uh, um, so we have a similar precedent where, where we, um, provided. Availability letter for them. So it's up to you to decide whether you want to provide the, the sewer service.
Sure. Jane, you guys had concerns? You discussed this?
We had concerns. And part of the concern was the, um. Staff told us that the ordinance that had been updated to allow council to make this decision was pretty. Onerous on staff and that. I mean, we can't force them to build to our standards. I don't feel that we should keep allowing all these little areas to not annex in. I mean, the next time where's that? Pink line gonna be? Is it gonna move out even further? So therefore it's gonna be higher for them to. To annex in, so therefore, you know, higher to meet the threshold. Of forcing everybody else to annex in. There's a large property next to it. If it had been developed, it would have been a forced annexation. But they haven't. So the developers are going around and, and now they're able to build to county standards, not city standards. And someday, if we ever have an annexation plan, we'll be stuck with properties that are then gonna be asking us. For improvements to their property to meet city standards.
We still address that. And I, I thought we could require them as part of this to develop their sidewalks and everything to city standards as part of the agreement.
I think, um, there's an opportunity, is it with the Public Cities Construction Agreement or with the O U A that we require that? We just, I think we added that to the Anatai. Project. And the pink line shouldn't move because that's the established U G A boundary. So it takes. The whole county con plan process to move the pink line. So that's not an arbitrary area. That is the.
But if the other project that we or a previous council approved had been developed. Then this whole area would have been a forced annexation, right?
Property value, we're still under the seventy or sixty percent.
Yeah, yeah, we did take a look at that and, uh, and ran the numbers with that on it.
I think they're pretty close to.
It's getting closer.
Oh, yeah, it is close, but it still begins with, you know. It's like fifty four percent or something.
I'm just.
So this is how, this is why we do O U As. Like, uh. There was a time when I first came to the city that we had a woman named Terry O'Neil and who, she worked for the mayor and she gathered up. All of her little O U As in a basket and then would bring something to council to annexing. There were a number of those that happened when I first started with the city. We don't really do that that much anymore, but when we sell service and we get an O U A, at some point, we're gonna tip over that point where we can make a decision. If we, we need to annex that whole area versus, uh, you know, just waiting for someone to come in and, um, propose it. So I think selling service is a good thing. I think getting an O U A is a good thing. The city standards part of it is a good concern. I'm not saying that's a bad concern. But I think in terms of trying to promote annexation, um, O U As are a great tool for us to be able to do that. We don't use them like we used to.
I only recall one property being annexed in in the past ten years. And then two. And then the property by the airport before that.
And that was, right, but and the Corbett property wasn't the city dictating annexation for any reason. That was the property owner wanting a better. Um, zoning density for that area, right? So, um, it's a council decision. We've, uh, we've had service approved for the property directly next door. Um, it gets us closer to the target number to be able to annex at some point. Um, but, I mean, we've given you every, all the information that we're supposed to provide and now it's a matter of going to council and. And it, and unless you have any other questions, I'm not sure what else to say about it. So, oh, okay. Go ahead, Denise. Good job.
Yeah, um, I don't feel the same level of angst. I do see it as a process. Part of the process of, um, uh, annexation. And so, um, I guess in, in this case. You know, I'm a little bit more in alignment with, with Nick around this, um, or excuse me.
What did that say about you?
Name from time to time. Um, but, uh. I do, I, I, you know, I don't see it as it's, we're almost there. We're this close, you know, it's. It's just connected to part of the process. So I don't have any angst around it.
So I, I think I, Ned, you are here, but Andre and I actually drafted an ordinance that created this. Put it in front of the council. And the whole reason for the revised ordinance was to make developers annex in when feasible. Worst case scenario, not feasible, but still desirable. They sign the O U A. I think the council is willing to do this as long as we have some assurance. That it will be built to city, the roadways and all that stuff, to city of Birmingham standards. And that would be our insistence. If we have that, I think we had a deal.
On that is, can we create some sort of agreement with the county that when they're approving something in our U G A? That, you know, or, or something that says like whichever standard is considered the higher or something like that, so.
I think that's a good idea. I don't know what it's gonna take to make that happen.
It doesn't have to happen before this.
I think that's a great concept. I think it's understood by D C D. I'm not sure who we broker that with at the county, quite honestly.
Uh, Anna, and then we gotta let Nick answer the question.
Is he gonna become Nick now?
It was Denise that did it. I've known Ned for years. I've hardly ever knew Nick. Anna, go ahead.
Thanks. So I, I feel a great deal of angst about this also. Um, we just, at our last study session. Approved a five point zero zero eight million dollar loan for the Tracyton Beach Sewer. So it's like building sewer that we, where we can't, we have no influence over what goes into that sewer. From that end, um, makes me very, very nervous indeed. Like. Does Kitsap count, does the county zoning have the same requirements for septic that runs from houses to, to the wastewater?
They have to request an availability letter, which is part of, we have to provide an availability letter. They have to tell us what their land is. Have to tell us what their impact on the wastewater is. They have to tell us what their strength is. So it's like that process of approval. Part of it is clearly understanding what the impact is on our. And how much flow it's gonna be, what pipe sizing and if there's a pump station, which there is in this case, the sizing of that. So. Um, we have all kinds of input on that. I was gonna ask though, and I think Kylie, how do we handle the Anatai street standards issue? Do you remember?
I don't remember.
I seem to remember. I think we put a provision in the motion that says something about it. The six have. Provided it's, uh, developed according to city Birmingham standards.
I think we hear what you're saying. I think we can mimic Anatai. I just don't know exactly what that looks like to take to council.
Consent and then we'll have our eagle eyes and look for it to make sure that the wording was added. And if not, I'll pull it and we'll put it on general or we can pull it. Time is not of the essence. It could wait another two weeks.
You gotta be able to figure this out and get an agenda bill updated by next Wednesday.
We just did, there, there is some case law that's relevant to, um. Because this is the situation where this is in our sewer availability, the area. Issues that came up in the, in the case, all that is currently pending decision. I argued that. And so we'll, we'll do what we can.
Okay. Right, so we have.
Final question, please. Um, so. It's not feasible because they don't want to be part of Birmingham. That's what makes it infeasible.
Because D C D said it was too hard for them to go and talk to all the property owners.
Um, they have a survey, do we not?
They're not adjacent to the city limits. So that's one criteria. And then there has to be a sixty percent value. And in order to get that sixty percent value with that above and above the O U As, they've gotta go talk to property owners and get people to sign a petition. Over and above it. That's the difficulty. So we, we required Anatai to do that and they were unsuccessful, right? So, um, that's a tall order for developers to go do.
Okay, but I mean, it, it, it seems to have been pretty much like that every time we try to get something. So I, I'd like to really make sure that this is where at what? We're not at fifty four, we're fifty seven point eight. So that is really close to sixty percent, but. I just really would like at some future point to figure out how to do this annexation better and more clearly because. Yeah, we need an annexation plan. Yeah, or a policy, or a ball. Okay.
Point taken. So you have the direction, council for Wednesday?
We'll try to put the documentation together that requires meeting street city standards for their zone.
Lighting and everything.
If we can do that and then they, that's, I don't know what the, she, she was talking about with the Anatai. I don't know what, there's a.
So that's the plan consent with, uh, provision that. Next item up. Uh, no, we have the, uh, Al. A five alternate transportation program grant agreement with Washington State Transportation Improvement Board for the Warren Avenue sidewalk gap. So.
Sounds good.
And it's a good one too. So, um, this is, uh, we brought this before public works committee in December. Um, we recently received a grant from T I B to basically be able to build sidewalk from Burwell. On the east side of Burwell Street from, or on the east side of Warren Avenue from Burwell Street up to Fourth Street. You might remember this, the area that had those wooden garages that they were running there, that had been there since, I think, thirties. Uh, when they tore them down, there's no sidewalk there now. So we're gonna go in and build it. It was, uh, uh, basically the, the, the cost was, we've estimated at fifty seven thousand dollars. The grant is forty three thousand, three twenty. So it's paying seventy six percent of the cost. Our match is just a little under thirteen thousand. And we're gonna do this all in city crews.
Consent, consent.
Mike, I just have a question. Why is the property owner not on the hook for the sidewalk?
I believe it was part of the negotiation to, uh, get us some additional right of way at the corner. Um, and we traded for doing the sidewalk.
Our decision. Okay, that consent it is, thank you. Sorry to slow it down.
For the record, that was, that was Gunner, Mr. Gunner, Fred, Frederick, son.
Yeah, I brought that up. Nick Frederick.
AKA Nick. Let's just call everybody Nick.
We're all Nick at night.
All right. So a- as I forewarned, we're gonna jump to item B seven. I was also involved Public Works, the Public Works Agreement for Purchase of Playground Equipment from Landscape Structures Incorporated. Oh, Anna, this is you.
Yeah.
Brad and Park.
Finally.
Anna liked the toys in the playground.
All right.
Well, thi- this is interesting. Why does it say Public Works Agreement? We have our parks director here.
It's the type of agreement. It's it's for public works project.
Okay.
Not from public. Get that.
So I can do the one minute or I can do the seven minute one?
Well, we're gonna do the one if everyone's okay with it. They've had a chance to review the packet and just for the record, it's our parks director. Mr. Tim Barker that's presenting, so go ahead, Tim.
Can we do the seven minute at general meeting next week? Many people would like to hear it.
On consent.
Fair enough.
Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, so this is a um purchase of playground equipment for Head and Park project. As you remember, July third, you approved the project for the for the department to move forward with that. And so this is just one of those pieces of that puzzle as we uh begin to put everything together. Um, this August, we had a um, our Parks and Rec Commission meeting, which I actually was in attendance. For prior to working, I just happened to be in town and so we uh had an open meeting with. A number of community members that were on site that went through the thirteen different um. Potential options that we had come up with from six different vendors for playground. Installation and then uh from that meeting, we continued to have the availability of people to come on site at Sharon Park Community Center. To be able to provide their feedback. Uh, at the December, um, early December Parks and Rec Commission meeting, we walked through those results. Uh, the selected um concept, which is in your packet, was um. Received twice as many votes as the second option. Uh, we've made a few adjustments. There was a fourth slide that was. Planned in there. We changed that to a climbing option. So um, just to kind of diversify things a little bit. Um. But this is for um, a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars and change, a hundred and thirty-two of that comes from community development block grant. The remaining portion will come from the Recreation Conservation Office. As part of the funding for the grant for this project, so there's no city funds going towards this. So this would be an agreement with Landscape Structures is the parent company that we would be purchasing equipment from. We have previously purchased equipment through Landscape Structures for Warren Avenue. Um, Juannus Park and then also. I think Evergreen Rotary Park is the other one that we use there. They are known um within the industry of the the top playground. Um, products that are out there, so.
I get a question. How come playgrounds don't have swings anymore?
This one does.
Yeah, they're.
All the way over to the right, all the way over to the right. It's got like five or six.
Um, yeah, so I think there's a, there's a couple other, you have a couple other pictures that better shows that. So there's, there's two infancy uh swings and then there's two regular swings over there. So there's a total of four.
I have a a a question. Um, since there's no, um. In the, in the whole concept plan of the park. Uh, the playground is tucked back against the retaining wall where the former playground was. In the beautiful photos that were, you know, concept plant that we're seeing here. Um, it's, I mean, naturally, I know it's not gonna be in a grove of of any kind of trees because. It won't be in our, there's nothing indicated, but it's open on all sides on this inset um plan. Whereas in the whole concept plan, it's backed up against the retaining wall, so I I'm just wondering which is accurate.
So the concept design that you have was was created by Playscapes. Uh, or Play Creation.
Yeah.
Is is the local vendor rep and so their focus obviously was on the playground. Um, area itself as opposed to putting it in on a realistic um. There is, it is adjacent to.
Yeah, the retaining wall has seat and all that.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a retaining wall along the edge of the exterior portion. Uh, but yeah, so they're.
So like along here?
Well, their their.
Or along here.
Along the exterior of where the park is. There is a retaining wall that goes around the entire. Yep, that goes around the entire um playground area. Okay, so. So when they create these, the the focus is the playground as opposed to.
It's just a background that they use.
No, I get that. I just wanted to, like, people in my neighborhood really will want to see this and I want to be able to tell them.
To the hillside, which will have some trees on it and we'll be doing landscaping there. Um, just next immediately next to it will be the prefabricated restroom and then adjacent to that is the sport court area.
Yeah, so I just, I I have been following this, I do assure you. So um, it's. One border of this will be the retaining wall and. There is there anywhere where people can see which border that will be so that they can really envision it? Cause it's been a long time.
Yeah, so I mean, we we have um, we have photographs that we can provide to you, yeah.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah.
I'm really happy about the swings.
Me too.
People.
Yeah, that was something that was definitely um an amenity that people wanted to continue to see and incorporate it.
And I also really like it that there's things that actually challenge kids, so it's not all for like two-year-olds. It's it's a really, really nice design. Thank you.
And our color palette matches very well with the restroom.
Green?
Yes, it's a green brown. Yeah. It blends very well, okay.
Thank you all for your patience. You know, it's been a long time on this.
Any other questions? So Tim, I got, I got, I've asked this question with Jeff before and he 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 uh. It's quite knowledgeable about it. I don't believe this has to do with the equipment, but is the uh surface from rubber? I am sure you're all aware of all the hazards of, so can you just tell us what the Parks Commission and you have decided for the safety of the kids as far as the?
Yeah, and obviously looking at the the hundred and thirty-two thousand that was solely dedicated for the playground, that was kind of our. We and we ended up at a hundred and thirty-six, but we were able to add a feature and it kind of moved some things around, but one of the things we did not. Incorporate into this was a synthetic surface or a foreign place or um like a rubberized foreign place or a. Um tile, a tile rubber.
Yeah.
Uh, so this is engineered wood fiber that's accessible as well, so it's a it's a park.
Like what's up at Pendergast?
Um.
At the playground that Pendergast?
Yeah.
So the the other thing is recently PFAS has come into the news and I I'm not an expert, but I believe maybe some of this stuff has. Artificial grass, a lot of it has, you're aware of this, so, okay, so you're on it, we're all good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. How do you wanna treat this item?
Consent.
I would like to put it on general business.
You're allowed to put it on general business, takes one council member.
Okay.
Tim, we'll see you next Wednesday.
That's good.
Thank you.
All right, now, how does the council feel? I can go all night without taking a break, so.
I'd like a break.
I'd like a break.
How many minutes do you want?
Are we gonna vote? Cause I would not like a break.
Nine.
No, you know, we're we're gonna, we're we're gonna uh.
Like just ten minutes, not nine, not eight and a half.
Okay, we'll go ten minutes with ten minutes sharp and I'm starting a timer on you.
Seven, ten, whether he's gonna consent, whether he's.
You'll just go, okay, Naval Avenue, it's on consent. You missed it.
I just hit the start button, ten minutes. Right. Let's squeeze right in here.
Now, this will be another group.
Tonight, we have a guest.
So Ms. Grover, I I made a mistake and I didn't have the microphone on, so I'm just gonna read again what this item is. Thank you. So we're at item B six supplemental agreement number four with H D R Engineering Incorporated for the Naval Avenue First Street to Fifteenth Street Pedestrian and Bicycle Enhancement Project.
Um, anyway, so today I would like to introduce my uh a guest who is the uh consultant, design consultant for the Naval Avenue project. Uh, Robert Acevedo, that's with H D R. And I'll turn it over.
Hello, that's me. I still have an issue where I'm not presenting on that screen. And F five does not work.
Ah, come on, chat to me, Tim.
Hi, Robert.
Check, hold F five.
Hold F five?
That's what it said.
Hold the word.
Yeah, all right.
Control F five?
I'm gonna throw a law.
Let's go back to paper.
Saying we can't see the whole stuff, we can see the slides.
Yeah.
We're good.
But I can't advance them.
Oh.
That's the, that's the thing is like I can.
That is, that's the oddest thing.
And if I could actually touch that freaking, I could do it, but. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
So I don't find out and ask any of them, something just happened.
Can you go up to up there and pull down again?
Yeah, yeah, it just pulled up. Is there any?
To the upper left.
Oh, no, that's um, the part of the presentation.
You're telling me you can't go to the slideshow?
I can, but when I click it, it puts the slide on my laptop. So I nearly do your primary moment, let's go.
I would switch it maybe to that.
Yeah, yeah.
There, a dropdown primary, is there an option for?
Automatic or primary?
A secondary.
Yeah, of course, you know.
Who will let you that straight slide at all?
Yeah, we can do it here.
Yeah.
All right, that's my first work.
Sure.
All right, uh, Robert Acevedo, I'm John the New Face here, um, the uh. Senior Traffic Engineer with H D R and the Project Manager for the Design Team. Been on this for quite a long time, so it's pretty, pretty exciting. I'm also a Birmingham resident and, you know, raising small kids here, so this is kind of personal to me as well. I'll make sure that we're we're getting this right and it's a successful project for the community because. Have really easy facilities. Um, my uh background started in Portland in two thousand and six. And all I do is multi-modal and grand project. Um, I've done these types of re-channelization projects in Washington, Oregon, California, Nevada. Um, I'm really well-versed in how these projects go and the reason I like doing these projects specifically is there's such an impact on communities. The repurpose of these lanes to, you know, wider sidewalks, bike lanes. Um, and it's a profound, profound difference that you see. I've done some before and after studies and um, and it's it's transforming into these areas and it makes these things accessible. And if I don't, I could have indicated in the presentation.
All right, thank you, Robert. So um, on this slide, you can see what our uh discussion agenda will be for tonight, so uh again, reminding us we're here for amendment number four for the right-of-way phase. Um, and then after that, Robert, talk about the project overview, just to remind us again of the Naval project. As well as the goals and objectives of the project. Um, and then we will get into the concerns that were raised at Public Works Committee. And then after that, we'll have our open discussion. And I'm hoping that we can get through uh the entire presentation and save our questions to the end, but we're gonna try it, that's our goal. Thank you, next slide, Robert. So again, we're here for amendment number four uh to the original contract um for the right-of-way phase. Uh, we were at Public Works Committee in September of last year and we were at study session in December of last year. So contract modification number four is for the right-of-way phase. Um, there's various tasks that are included under this, which is the acquisition. Uh, we have a temporary acquisition, we have permanent acquisitions, we have right of entries. Uh, management and administration of the right-of-way process is very, uh, there's a lot of paper process again, cause it's uh. Regulated by the federal government. Uh, we have to do appraisals, we have to have appraisals reviewed, there's a lot of negotiations that need to be done with the pro uh property owners. Um, you know, whether it's for permanent acquisition or temporary. Um, and then there's the relocation services and then ultimately we have to get the right-of-way certified and approved by WashDOT. Um, I would like to call everyone's attention to the right-of-way needs. Um, I remember the last time I was here, there was some discussion and people wanted exact numbers. There are your exact numbers. I think I was off by one probably on each of these, but. There are your exact numbers for permanent acquisition and temporary and then the total number of acquisitions that the right-of-way will be impacting. And this uh funding amount for this amendment is one point four million dollars, which is um, uh, we have the budget for. And with that, just a little reminder of why we're here, we will turn it over to Robert, start talking.
Thank you. I'll, I think everybody's been well-versed with the Naval Lab project, so I'll blast through this pretty quick, but essentially it's a very wide existing roadway out there. Fairly low volumes, especially most part of the day. Uh, the, so the plan is to repurpose that additional capacity with the true generalization, three-lane cross-section, that's a three-lane, it's a center turn lane. For the most of the corridor and then with that, it was widening sidewalks to improve A D A access, make some connectivity uh connections. And enhance uh pedestrian crossings. Right now, the addition of Naval Ave serves as kind of a barrier to walking, very wide street cross. Um, so having strategically located pedestrian access within its dense crossing will help alleviate that issue. And then also have the bicycle facilities connecting this, really important north-south connection, connecting a lot of the um. Current facilities, this local planned facilities for the city's non-motorized planning. And then overall, it's really promoting safety and for all users. I mean, in the act that residents and businesses and others along other issues. All right, project goals, wanna kind of rehash this, it's it's been in the works for a while. Um, it's really around enhanced mobility, safety, um, and accessibility on Naval Ave. So we wanna repurpose this because there is excessive uh vehicle capacity there, I think we can use it better. Um, but we also need to maintain as a complete street. Uh, one of the big targets is reducing vehicle speeds. We have several features within the design that account for that. Um, making sure that we're enhancing the safety to pedestrians by providing an access, making sure that they are accessible. Increasing the ability of. Um, providing safe cycling facilities that meet the uh use and need of the facility. Connecting these networks like I mentioned and then maintaining access overall. In a nutshell, that's the goal and objective of the project that we've been trying to report at this point. Milestones to date, so this has been in the works for a while.
Yeah.
Um, Shane, Shane went after and won the WashDOT bike head grant back in two thousand and eighteen and that started this whole thing off. Um, the design started in twenty twenty and we've kind of gone through several um. Iterations of this in terms of uh virtual online of the houses. Um, you know, something kind of happened in twenty twenty, we pivoted with our um planned uh public outreach, went to a virtual online. Um, with virtual online as well as online webinars and it really kind of set the uh precedent for how we do some of these online. Interactions and we got quite a bit of comment through those. And then we wanted to make sure that we were getting uh the understanding of all uh users along the corridors, we had dedicated um simple advisory group meetings. Um, so the SAG group was compiled of all users of the um. The uh facilities and we met with them to kind of go through the plan, get their initial feedback and then touch base with them as we got through some of the. Uh, concept. Um, went after K S R C grant, we were unsuccessful for the first one there in December twenty twenty-one. And then we went after it again later in twenty twenty-three, which we were successful on a order due right-of-way of funding for this. Um, since then, since we had the funding approved, we kept things moving with getting this even more approvals, the dates for when those were um achieved. And um, we also have the uh. And we also have the Washdott right of way approval for the ordinary current plan. And those are kind of the milestones that are needed to really think forward onto this next phase, which we are targeting to do some of there. Now the plan says tonight, but tonight is a pretty significant layout where we're at, it's captured all the coordination elements of the date. And it's really that next step to bolting things and working with all landlords as we move into the right process and it's been a while. That's the minute schedule moving forward, the right of way acquisition. And take two years to thirty months, it's a pretty significant effort with the number of parcels and the number of, you know, the acquisition versus TCDs versus full acquisition. That requires the order in every location. So as of right now, in order to hit the twenty twenty point, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, sounds like site on numbers. Dates, it's, it's considered a pretty aggressive right of way schedule. With being able to move forward quickly, we'll be able to get these dates and go to add as a target of December of two thousand and twenty-six. Now, the reason for two thousand and twenty-six is it falls within the city's overall funding strategy and it's a competitive window for where we end up seeing a lot of the you know, good bids coming from contracts. So it's kind of the thinking behind setting some of these dates and schedules. Construction would then be in two thousand and twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-eight. We say that this is estimated because, you know, funding for construction is not at here, however, based on the work that's been done, the grants that have been awarded to date makes this a very vulnerable project, so moving forward. I'm still pretty enthusiastic that this will be able to meet this temporal. Alright, stakeholder input, I want to go through this pretty quickly, which this was a important part and I can share all the input. So we had a pretty robust stakeholder advisory group made up, the school district, the naval base, which is the southern terminus of the project, kids have transit. Washdott for reference on the SR three oh four there at Burwell. And then kids have public health districts, West Sound Cycle Club, and then all the different interworking departments of the city. We had a few other out there, but these remain contributors that were there. And then some of these are the feedback and outcome that came from these coordination. It was, it was really well received and and talked about was, you know, we want to make sure that this corridor is walkable and accessible overall, especially with the schools that we talked about. The wider sidewalks were kind of pulled forward as yes, this is a very beneficial thing that we want to make sure we have and anyone else wanted to break that barrier to walking with the installation of RRVs. So through this, we added additional locations, so now there's thirteen, eight, ten, and four. Probably if it doesn't order, but those are the locations where we're gonna have those protected, like protected crossings with the RRVs as well as additional activated street lighting. So those are really important to make sure that we're reusing the barrier to crossing this facility. I'm gonna go through quickly, there was a bunch of other stuff that was covered. We had a lot of input from the Scrumpton School District on how the residents of their property would be. And then concerns with the gate and how it's done. As part of that effort, we had a traffic study done where we looked at gate access and looked at, you know, the different variations of how traffic moves through that gate. Depending on what vessels they have at, at a downtown port, what their what their color code, full level of security and how that affects their gate processing time. So I think you may have talked to this earlier, is it actually creates a lot of variability in what that queuing requirement is? And then how do we make this work where we're also providing the needed access? Walking through those key points. So those were all touchpoints that we went through with SAG meetings without feedback in reference on.
Just real quick, Claire, what is place making under school zone improvements?
Yeah, so place making is more of like some wider areas not necessarily needed for minimums or maximums.
Like where kids can get together and hang?
Yeah, it's that, it's, you know, you know, features there, artwork, you know, stuff, it's kind of create some more.
Make it quick. Okay, thank you.
Because Google doesn't know.
Should.
You would think.
Alright, and that's about it. So moving forward, okay, so just discussion topic of what we want to get into here. These are the bulleted items that came out of Public Works meeting, meeting. And things that we're gonna talk a little more in detail here, so consider eliminating right turn pockets, talk on that. Consideration of right turn on red, considering moving the bike lane to the curb, I know we've already had a precursor to some of these conversations.
There also was shortening up crosswalk, lanes at eleventh in Naval. It was critical.
That was generated by eliminating right turn pockets, right? That's kind of that thing, isn't it?
Yeah, if we can.
Yeah, if you do a straight and left, yes.
So this is a breakdown of the three locations that we have remaining right turn pockets along the border of Burwell, six at eleven. To touch again, I think this was covered in the sixth street, Washdott standards for level service E or better, city standards for level C or better. One of the things that Washdott varied, E.
He said C, but it's E.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should see it up there.
Yeah, there are Cs.
So, well, having said that, a little bit of breakdown of level service E versus level service D. D is, you're, you're getting that congestion, it's a real sharp peak in your peak period, so you're looking at fifteen minutes, thirty minutes of congestion. Then it levels out, produces speed. When you get a level service E is when you start to have unstable. So any kind of small deviation, vendor vendor, or anything that, that you know, any kind of side friction, those kinds of things, it's gonna cause, you know, quite quickly. And that was significantly, not only gonna block up the main line, but then it'll block, block your connector. That'll give a little more precedence if you're gonna talk to somebody. So that's kind of the overall definition of what these two things mean for generalities. Washdott standard is level service D, or currently for the design, if they're not needing that. Level service, they allow a level service E mitigated if you have a reason where you're mitigating the intersection through this or if they're multi-modal benefit from it. So we're already at, we're already kind of pushed past their limit in order to give the max amount of additional benefit. One of the differences we'll see from this and some of the stuff done for Sixth Street is at the time, we were working with the twenty forty horizon year. Now the further along, it's the comp plan upgrade, the horizon year is now twenty forty-four. So that's why you'll see a little bit of significant issues at Six compared to what we're seeing here, but so the proposed design has the shows there in the yellow. And then the no right turn, or removing those right turn at these three locations to show them in blue. When you look at it at face value, it doesn't look like it's doing that much of significant impact, but this is also reporting your intersection level through. And there's a brief discussion about that was, and I'm so proud Nick nailed it. It doesn't take into account.
Actual Nick.
Actual Nick. So it doesn't take into the account of what are you, what are you looking at on your approaches, your approach to pace? And we break it down in the modeling, looking at your delays and volume passing ratios for each movement. I'll go ahead and skip to the next slide unless you're.
Can you stay on this a minute? Is that supposed to be a C or is it supposed to be a D?
Supposed to be, or it is.
Okay, at eleven.
At eleven.
So you designed for a C and no right turn lane is a C?
Correct.
Are you gonna talk about that later?
Yep. Alright, so now that we get in here, we're gonna start with Burwell. So this is the southbound direction. One thing on face value, it allows the intersection to lay out pretty well. And at this point, we've gone through some coordination with the development of that corner. And they've coordinated their design for the redevelopment along with their project here. When you look at the level of service, you know, pop back up here, it goes from E to E. Well, E is barely not a D in the proposed design. Whereas the E for no right turn on, remove the right turn is almost a half, you know, like a kind of range. And what does that mean is southbound approach queue, right now, the design is at about a hundred and seventy-five. And kind of hard to see, sorry. But right now, the the proposed design.
I know, it's near, isn't it? You see it go behind.
He's trying to point at the intersection.
Yeah, he's trying to.
There's such a delay from the.
Can do a good wheel of fortune.
You want me to do it manually for it?
Yeah, get a. Wheel of fortune, battle of.
Talking about that's right here right now?
Uh, no, on the other side. So right here where this is, so this is the southbound direction, this is what we would anticipate the southbound queueing to be during this peak period. About a hundred and seventy-five feet. Now, if we remove this right, which doesn't seem like a lot, not a bunch of storage. What it does is it actually extends that queue five hundred feet all the way down the street. Because you're, you're, you're using that storage, but you're also now having to turn in lane. So now you don't get the benefit of some of those free right that you get. And this picture down here, the corner, is looking southbound, kind of at that same place where the queueing is, and this is one of those high peak mornings where traffic is stacking up. Do you notice, and this was part of the just project, that outside right lane is, oh, is pretty underutilized? Because everybody that's accessing the gates stacking up on inside lane in order to be lined up to go through the gate turnstile for the gate process. But still, when you get down to the intersection, making that availability for those rights. And it's not as big of an issue in the AM because most of the AMP peak is inbound traffic to the base. It's a bigger issue in the PM where there's actually people using that right to go ahead and, and get out on Burwell.
From where? It's, they're not coming from the base.
They're not coming from the base. It's more downtown general traffic, people have, are in that area.
So commuters.
People who like to drive at four oh K.
Yeah. No.
Alright, so that's, that's Burwell, moving up quickly to Sixth. Sixth is kind of more of the, the issue, and we were talking about this earlier, is for an intersection like this, there's quite a bit of turning movement. And it's not so much if there's entry through movement, easier to mitigate, whereas this is how all movements are fairly heavy. Jump back here, and those bigger turn movements, both left down, both left turns and right turns. And it's kind of across the board, so it's that.
And that's at peak hour, these turning movements.
Is that PM peak then for this?
Yeah.
Alright, so Sixth Street, it's like three hundred and thirty-seven left turners and two hundred right turn.
Correct.
On the northbound direction?
Yep.
That's data.
So what that does to the queue is we're already projecting a queue that's going to go several blocks to right about here under the proposed project. If we get rid of the right turn pocket, the anticipated queue then grows to eight seventy-five, which isn't realistic because there's not enough storage falling there. So what that does is now you're getting queuing along through Burwell Street where we're backing up this left turn as well through turn, or the through turn, the through movement here. That's what we call spillback. And that's where you're now having additional impacts to Burwell and SR three oh four. And that's, that's the concern. To eleven. Alright, eleven. Similar situation, that right turn has a fairly decent volume with, sorry, two ninety-eight making that right turn. So there are gonna be people coming out of base, out of local businesses, residents, going to hang that right, potentially going up eleven to access Warren, in that kind of direction. So what we're looking at here, bouncing around a little bit, yeah. So right now, the proposed plan projects a anticipated queue of two hundred feet, which keeps you within that first block. With removing that right turn pocket, you're over doubling your anticipated queue, now to be back to Ninth Street.
So you could do a straight and left in one lane now? And shorten up the crossway? It looks like those numbers are way less.
The thing with the lefts though, is it may pencil out better in terms of operations, but layout isn't as, as ideal. If you have the center turn lane, part of it is having that predictable cross section. But you have a center turn lane and then you're transitioning back to through left at the intersection, it doesn't, it's not as predictable for drivers and it's, doesn't flow as well and it creates operational challenges at the intersection. Now you're creating delay in movement.
So maybe it's, does that area actually need a center turn lane? So if you, if you just have two lanes, one going right and one going left and straight? Where, where are people doing left? Why do they need the center turn lane there as they approach? What would that be, ten?
Yeah, so it's to facilitate the movement on ten. And it's, there's a few driveways here and I believe this is an alleyway that's back in the different driveways.
Yeah, but the, but the center turn lane is south of those driveways. Right? So it's not gonna help them get into that alley or the driveway because there's no center turn lane there. You can't cross, cross three lanes to get to an alley.
Well, you're, I guess I'm not understanding where you're coming from.
This area, why do you need a center turn lane now? You could just have it go straight through and you could either do a left or a right. That area is so short anyway and you've got cars coming up there. I mean, this is not an ideal situation to have a center turn lane that close to a major intersection anyway.
Yeah, typically how it's designed, because that way then you're adding additional storage for that left turn.
Well, yeah, so you get rid of the if this is not a turn pocket, right? If this is not a two-way turn pocket, that would be storage for a left and right and straight turn lane. And you wouldn't need to have the intersection so wide. The crosswalk would not have to go across one, two, three, four lanes of traffic. It would only have to go across three.
I'm thinking about signal operation and having a dedicated left turn that's protected versus having it through and left where you have to yield to the oncoming traffic. I don't know, that would impact it, but I would say if you make left turners and through traffic, then you're having to yield for oncoming people in that other.
Isn't that how it is now?
It is, yeah. I use that intersection a lot. It's, the northbound traffic has a, a, a straight ahead and a, a left arrow at once.
In one lane, yeah.
I mean, also does the you, now by having that protect the left turn, you can then stop that left turn. So if you want to implement an LPI, maybe as you're near a wall, which we'll talk about that, but along Eleventh Street, you can get the L of that protected right turn so that you can stop them from turning there. And if you stop them, you still get the benefit of being able to have a through lane.
Is that that big a benefit? I don't know. For the through lane to go through North.
It's more the benefit to allow that right turn being through the, I think the through of the minor movement.
Yeah. And that's why if it's so minor, why can't it be included in the same lane as the left turn?
It creates kind of not a substandard signal operation.
Huh?
Well, it's just if the signal operation is not consistent with your, how you typically operate signals, so as a driver, you approach a signal. You know, you, you have anticipation of how the signal functions typically, you have a left turn, you know, through, sometimes you'll have it through right.
Right.
So having that consistency throughout the city, you know, allows drivers to be more understanding of how they're supposed to function when they get through the intersection.
But the majority of people using Naval are people going to and from the shipyard. Right? Because the peaks versus what the center of the day is. Well, I drive around during the day and there's hardly anybody driving there. So it's basically the, you know, shipyard workers. So, I mean, you don't. So, I mean, you don't. I don't see that every signal operates the same. Predictability in Bremerton. I mean, look at Warren and Eleventh. And and Burwell and Warren and High and Eleven. I mean, they're all different.
Well, we said we'd consider eliminating right and left turn pockets and I think that's what we've done. And the impact of that, that evaluation is extended queue length, right? And and I'm hearing that if we eliminate and we do a left and through, then it's. An awkward signal operation, I think is what you just said.
Cause now there's a a left turn light.
Left turn and straight is one lane.
Not right now.
At Naval, Eleventh?
Not northbound. But they go on at the same time.
Right, yeah, they go on.
Well, but it is in the southbound though. The southbound is one lane.
Yeah, it's just one lane.
The southbound is.
Yeah, across the street.
Basically a red light off.
It is, right? And it's a yield condition as well.
So based on queue length and signal operation, I think we're not recommending. Removal of right or left turn lanes at eleven. Is that accurate?
Well, and on the southbound side of this intersection on Naval. There's currently five lanes. We're taking it down to four, so essentially reducing pedestrian crossing, providing bike lanes. That's a huge improvement. Towards the bike perfect. You know, or.
Also um removes the site distance right there on the corner.
Well, yeah.
That house going, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a given.
The signal system, now it's updating the signal system so that it's modernized. And has the ability to do um things like LPIs or, you know, it makes up for that wider. Walking distance by giving them a jump to get them out. That's the biggest thing. You want you want pets and bikes to get out in front of vehicles when they see them.
So Robert, can you explain what an LPI is?
Yeah, so. And all it is, is it's a timing function at the intersection. It doesn't require, um, I mean, it's an older intersection and the wiring's bad. Program programmers thirty years old, like, yeah, yeah, right, but for most of the signals within the city, it doesn't require additional capital or improvement to be. It's just programming and amazing software. What it does, you know, to give the timing window where. The the pet signal turns on for walking. You walk where it holds the through vehicle. The vehicle has to wait for the pet to get up to a lot of time. Usually that's enough time for them to get halfway out in that first lane. So now they're in that cone of vision.
So one of the biggest objections to the right turn pockets is you're forcing bike riders. To ride between two lanes. And so we asked, is one of the things is to consider putting the bike lane up against the curb so that. Bike riders don't have to ride in between two active lanes. And I don't see that reflected anywhere.
We get there, we get there, right? Yeah, there is a slide to address that. Keep going. Would it be best to hit no rights on red or do you want to holler down to bike lane on the curb?
Let's do right, no right on.
Yeah.
No right turn on red. Um, I pulled the language from MUTCD, which is the national guidance on. Typically, no right turn on red is mitigating treatment or condition at the intersection that creates a safety.
And that's the intersection that to see now, right?
This is in general. How how do we use as traffic engineers, how do we use right turn on on red?
Yeah.
So within this guidance, you're now providing. Direction against how a signal system controls traffic. So in order to do that, um technically you need to have a traffic study done or an engineering evaluation done. That um then defines this as a need. And these are the list of warrants that MUTCD puts out that would then. Create the condition where when they're right on red, um would be warranted. But in general, this treatment is is have a way of mitigating an issue that otherwise can't be. Rectified. So for example, this location on eleven, I mean, southbound, there's no right turn on red sign up there. And that's to mitigate the the issue of a site distance constraint.
But isn't there a site distance um. Where constraint because of the people barreling eastbound up eleven of that that lined hill? Like. Like if you're heading, if you're heading northbound on.
Yeah, there is a no right on red now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I know there's one southbound and and there's one northbound as well.
So northbound one for sure.
Okay.
And the reason that there is because of that site.
Northbound doesn't have the site distance, southbound does.
Yeah, so southbound, yeah, you're correct. The south has a no right on red. And it's because of the site distance issue.
Yeah.
And I think if we pull the crash records for that location, we can see that that's pretty poor compliance. Though a no right turn on red is not a solution. It's a mitigating measure to help alleviate a poor condition.
So because people don't follow the law, we shouldn't put them up?
It's not a law.
Well, it's a prohibition. When you have a a white background on the sign, it means it's prohibited, right? Right, so because people don't follow the regulation, we shouldn't. We shouldn't use that? I don't understand that. Well, yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of things that we can't build because if you're a drunk driver, which is BS, you know, we can't put. Put speed humps in because of drunk drivers, you know? The question is, is he saying that? The crash data says that at eleventh and Naval, people aren't complying anyway with the no right turn on red. Which means. So that means we don't put it in?
Crash data says that they're not complying with no right on red. Is that, is that what we're saying?
That's what you said.
We're not saying that. We're saying that we could, we were to review it. Cause I've personally seen three crashes there.
I didn't think that's what you were saying.
I think historically, this isn't seen as a well-compliant process. Or well-functioned. That's why I've got down here.
We have two traffic cops and none of them, all they do is investigate.
Blankout sign is something that washed out at locations where they meet these warrants. They've gone from using a no turn on red sign to be more active blankout signs because. It creates more compliance than the sign does and it gives them the functionality.
Robert, I think we're really, what you're trying to say is that if these are to be put in, if they meet the warrants in the MUTCD. That there sometimes can be a compliance issue with drivers uh complying with this. And that's just something to be aware of.
Right, okay.
So we know that on the southbound, we have inadequate site distance, but on the northbound, if you take a free right on red. People are probably driving a little faster than maybe they should.
There's there, there's no turn on red going northbound. And I think the reason it's there is because it's a, it's a really a right angle. There's no curve. So like you have to pull up, you know. And those people are coming up that hill. So if it's a site distance, it's a maneuverability.
Probably speed related, there's a conflict there.
Well, we should keep those hard angles at intersections to keep people going slow.
I'd also like that I was noticing this as I was driving here tonight, that. This white sign, you can't see it at all. I mean, I know it's there. So, but it's, I I can see why you'd get greater compliance with this illuminated then because after dark.
So I actually put in that no turn on red sign southbound unable at that intersection. Uh, and the purpose for that was because of the accident data was able to get us uh underneath the warrant. And it warranted it there uh because of the site distance with that building on the corner.
That's the corner where the woman with kids.
Right, right, yeah, that's true.
Generally speaking. We look at warrants to install these. We don't make them in willy-nilly because they impact the um signal operation. And there, and these are the warrants that. We look at if we're going to look at a no right turn on red.
But then if we have an exclusive pedestrian phase, like you're saying, we would have the option to have. Then you can put the right turn on. Sign.
If we have an exclusive phase, then what's going to happen is you're going to have a red ball at the intersection. Prohibiting uh movement there, right?
An exclusive pedestrian phase would be like a pet scramble. You're shutting down the entire intersection, all pets can go any direction. That's exclusive. LPI is just like ten, later ten seconds of lead to get them out crossing.
In 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 sight. Yeah.
So I think the takeaway on this one is is um, you know, we took a look, we we have these warrants that we need to comply with to be able to put in the sign. Um, we haven't done the engineering evaluation to do it and can. Um, we did a cursory review of all these warrants to see if these intersections would be able to warrant a no turn on red. And we didn't think that they would based off of a cursor review. Um, but we're more than happy to take a look at it and do an engineering evaluation to uh to see if we can do that.
And it would be based on the warrants, right?
Or the federal government changing the law.
Right.
So for the purpose of this uh agenda bill item, we're trying to hopefully get this uh contract approved. For the right-of-way acquisition stage. Do we need to have the discussion on right turn on red tonight on that?
Well, so a lot of things have been thrown out and we're trying to. Um, I would say no, other than like if this can be tabled and can wait for a federal mandate or a citywide mandate. Great. If you want us to implement right to no right turn on red with this project. What we're saying is it's going to be based on warrants from that MUTCD. So we would do this warrant analysis and. Whatever that shows is appropriate is what we would recommend.
Right, would that increase the cost of the contract to do this? Are you doing in-house or?
Well, it's it's my understanding we're not, um. I don't think we're worried about increasing the cost of the contract. I get the sense that we're trying to make sure we pin down. What the design and that we're holding up this amendment. To make sure that whatever the design is that we move forward, that this council is comfortable with it and. Yeah, I'm I'm kind of paraphrasing you.
Yeah.
So why don't you help me out here and like actually say what I meant?
The discussion we had on Public Works was, let's take a step back too, and again, this this happened a lot happened, our COVID in design. And some things were changed and I think one is just getting the understanding of what is the current design on Naval because uh. We have the two hundred page engineering document, which is, I think it's great to put that out there because people who want to dig in can dig well. But we didn't have a really up-to-date kind of cartoon level, you know, high-level version. Um, that was one. And then two, the questions were coming from the community and others about all the options possible. And so. For me, that was just a, let's pause for a second if we can, so we can really understand this and dig in, which I appreciate you all doing.
And we got the role plot ready. So you'll be seeing it in the next.
So shall we move on from no right turn on red?
Well, I just wanted to. Give Michael some background on what we discussed in Public Works. We had talked about um. For this amendment to the contract. To ask them, asking them to pause on some of the right-of-way acquisitions. At intersections where. It didn't appear to us that we needed. That much new right-of-way for additional lanes.
The video, the compromise that the work could continue while we just took a little bit more to your.
Just at certain, certain intersections only.
Okay. So that's where we're going to try to decide tonight, so we can move forward.
I think what we're trying to bring forward is what we think the right design is and explain like try to address the things we were asked to consider, which we're trying to do.
Okay.
Um, and. Like there are definitely considerations for right turn and left turn pockets and I think we're recommending them. Uh, with some conviction because we think it's the right thing to do. Uh, I know there's other opinions about that. Um. At at the end of the day, we would like to bring this right-of-way amendment forward and get it approved and start moving forward with the work. Because we're comfortable with the design effort that we've done and that we have the good shape metrics.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can get there tonight or not. And I guess the alternative at the end of this conversation is we don't agree that you need all those right turn and left turn pockets. And as a council, we don't really want to approve this amendment in full. And so maybe there's that middle ground where we approve what we can and with there's some list of properties in a. In a motion or an agenda bill that says we need to come back to get approval for that. That's not a real efficient way to deliver this project. I'll say that, but.
No, but and and. It's almost like both sides will be dug in if we can't reach a compromise tonight. So what is the point of this? Cause I don't see the other side. Uh, I I find this frustrating. I know there's people listening, it's like, oh, so here I've got. Traffic experts. You guys get paid to do this. And you said yourself, I mean, you live in the community, you go, it's. You're bicyclist, you're pedestrian. And and I understand, I respect you guys. Jane, I know you had a background in this. But. Uh, I'm I'm struggling with this. I'm hearing plausible reasons for why this is designed this way. And then we're getting really into the. I could better turn nitty-gritty on this and kind of picking apart the thing. And the bottom line, I think Michael said it earlier, is that. This is a market improvement over what we have now. It's huge. It's not perfect because we're not starting with a blank straight slate. And got a hundred feet of space on each side. And so there's going to have to be compromises. So I think if the city. Tonight explains their reasoning why they did this, which is what they ask. You guys can't just say it has to be perfect. I, this would be the ideal situation. When they say this is why you don't, because you're going to potentially have these huge backups. And and to me, to say, well, the heck with it. They can have the backups. That's not. Like, we're going to pay the price in the end. We're going to pay the price. The there's going to be lots more people complaining to the city council. And I'm going to hear it from all the bicyclists, but I don't care. We're going to get lots of complainings like this, this whole area is congested. What the heck did you do? I'm sorry, I'm saying it. What the heck did you do? You screwed this up. You had professional engineers saying you should do it this way. This is why, but then we're picking this apart. That's what I'm struggling with tonight.
Right.
So I'd like you just kind of keep that in your mind and then let's move on to the next one.
Could you move off of this slide? I'll focus the no right turn on red for now. Okay, so go ahead. Bike lane on curve. So one of the comments was, if you can keep the right turn lane, but then move the bike lane of the curves that were. Removing that mixing zone when you're crossing your your bike lane over the vehicle turn. Um, this has been shared a couple times tonight. The only, so this is not allowed. You're not allowed to put a bike lane the right of. A right turn lane. Only if you can provide. This one, this setup right here that you're showing where you have a, you know, buffered protected bike lane. And you have the um. The signal. Uh, the bike signal port so that you can control it. Separate from the right turn vehicle. And I would even say the protection here is important. I would say is the buffer is now you're creating that separation. So these types of treatments that you're seeing being deployed at other communities are more of, I would say, a cycle track. Type condition where now you have a separate facility that buffered away from the vehicle. A lot of times you're seeing them with um parking that's going below them and there's very little access. You know, it's through a downtown urban core where maybe every two blocks, there's an access opening for a parking garage. Or along thoroughfares where um there's not a lot of access point. Um, that's really the 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 treatment for this. The way that the project is designed is NACDO's current best practices for through cycle lanes through intersection. And that puts the bike lane out in the center between the through lane and the right turn lane. Now, we understand part of development. We understand that's not for everybody. That's more of an aggressive commuter type. Um, person, but we're trying to build this facility to to generate mode split and we want to get people on their bikes commuting. We want to make sure that someone that's an avid biker can actually use the facility and do pretty quickly. Now, to. The part of the design that is the challenge of that is wider sidewalks. So most of the four doors, especially around the school, had eight-foot height. Now the Mesa foot sidewalk, I'd be perfectly happy having my little kids that are running a bike on a sidewalk. I mean, everybody else would be as well. And then you have the on-street facility for more of the advanced cyclists that you wouldn't want riding on the sidewalk. And that's kind of NACDO's vision of. And that's kind of NACDO's vision of the layout for the through traffic or the through lane and how that corridor was laid out.
So after you review Ashto's recommendations and they had the most up to date, thing is it was just published. Because my understanding is, is they do not recommend doing bike lanes in between two lanes. So what are you gonna?
They, they, maybe.
That's NACDO.
The better treatment would be like this. We're to do this, we're to do this, we need additional base.
There's more right away.
Yeah, basically it comes down to right of way and then signal operation. You have to have the protected, you have to go outside to the curb plus a buffer. Then you have to have a dedicated bike signal as I understand it. Otherwise you need to be between the through lane and the inside of the right turn lane.
So we're rebuilding the signal, right?
We're modifying signal, we're, we're probably doing half measures on. I'm trying to do chief pole.
So, so at six street, what we're doing is we have to relocate two poles to get outside uh, because they're in conflict with the new improvements. Uh, and then we're modifying signal heads um, on the other two poles to be able to accommodate the design.
That's six and then at eleven, you're putting in new signal pole. So, so are you saying that a bike signal is too expensive to add to, they're that expensive? Well, it's not an extra bike lane. So we're talking about, so two feet.
Uh, it's more right of way on both sides. And it's not, I mean, we're already taking right, it's not more right, it's significant impacts of property. Go back. We're looking at eleven, we're already close to this corner as we can get. In order to get that additional width. Or.
Okay, so I want to be really clear where, where the numbers that you're giving us. Are for what num, what traffic is anticipated to be in twenty forty-four, twenty forty.
For the, you know, the whole level of service conversation and the, you know, growth management, that conversation. It's not just building it for daily construction, but it's also looking at the future for your horizon plan here. Um, especially for the amount of capital and the investment to be making these facilities, you don't want to go and touch them again or anything.
Well, that would be twenty, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, now the question start. Yeah.
All right, uh, real quick, the last one is coming about um, for compatibility of the design with a protected bike lane. And um, when I was looking at this question, it was uh, it depends uh, for a polish answer. Um, it depends on the definition of what a protected bike lane is and it depends on the definition of what um, uh, for compatibility is. So for my understanding, for compatibility is if there's no additional civil work, like we're not gonna go and reconstruct sidewalks. We're not gonna go and resurface any roadway. We're not gonna do anything that causes actual construction. Maybe limited to things that we can accomplish with um, signing striping, adding some, some. Features like candlesticks or, or spike down type, or those kind of things. Um, so protected bike lanes, if we were to look at something like the treatment on Washington, we're using candlestick. Um, then yes, we can go through and make some of additions. If protected lanes are looking for five foot bike lanes with that buffer and section, then no, the, the design can't do those. Without significantly compromise.
So to make sure of the definition, when we say, that's comment earlier, protected bike lane, that is a definition from NACDO. The buffer plus the minimum width.
I think my understanding of separated and protected is that you have to have a buffer and the bike lane width. And, and there's the whole discussion about whether the gutter pan is included or not, right? So there's all of that together. And if we say protected or separated, depending on how, what your standard is for what that looks.
Yeah, it's all.
And so we thought you need to be careful being clear about.
That makes sense. And so what we currently have on Washington or in NACDO would not be a technically protected bike lane, but.
Nope.
We had some other word of semi protected.
So when you're saying forward compatibility, are you saying that? At the very least, we can't even have candlesticks on Naval Avenue?
Yeah, the opposite.
No.
We can have, I'm gonna call it baller. We could have a baller to bike.
But we can't have those five foot high concrete things.
No.
And we gotta be careful about saying what we're doing.
On a baller.
So saying we can do a treatment that approves it is different than saying it's a protected. So when we look at bike level of traffic stress and there's the definition of what it means to be a protected or separated bike lane. You may not be impacting your bike level of traffic stress in the table and by the standard. When it's a compromised standard that we're talking about. It's not like we're saying we can't do it. Let's just be clear about understanding what it is we're actually doing.
You don't wanna use the wrong term to get the wrong impression.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm making up a new one though.
Oh.
You can make it a, yeah, a Washington Avenue type.
Part of the thing why we're asking for these is, you know, Washington, we only have a few blocks of, of candlesticks, right? So what happens is people park in it all the time, even though it's illegal for them to, to park in a marked bike lane. You got a school right there and everybody knows you got crazy parents. They're all driving their kids to school and all of a sudden, if you don't have some protection or they see a bike lane, they'll. They could just pull over there if there's not even candlesticks in place.
Amazon will pull over everybody.
Yeah, so that's why I think it's important that. Yeah, let them park there.
Yeah.
That's where they should be parking. That's where they park in real cities.
Seeing on sticks, there's a. They park in the lane, so. They become comfortable parking in the center currently. Yeah, I've seen that as well.
And kids have where they park in the bike lane.
Yep, cause there's no, there's nothing to stop them.
There's a whole area with crosshatching where they're supposed to be parking.
Well, that's the reason why we put these in right here is because we had people parking in the spike lane.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And this is the best way that, that we could.
So you are going to do this because you're saying forward compatibility. Are you saying that you're going to put these in on the Naval Avenue project?
Me from Jeff was, I just wanna make sure that we're considering that it could be for, that it's could be forward compatible. But forward compatible, what is that? How do you define that? To what, right?
Right.
So is it forward compatible to protected, protected bike lanes without construction? No, it is not, right? But is it forward compatible to maybe adding some candlesticks at some point? I think, yes, it probably is.
Not like, given that where ninety percent is not up.
Uh, just, is that accurate to what we talked about?
Yes, that answers my question that, yeah, that I had.
Do we need to spend more time on this?
It, it doesn't really answer my, he was talking about a higher level of legal protection. My questions were, can we at least do this on naval?
Right now.
Right now, when we do the project, can we do that?
I guess I'm looking at you two, you three, sorry.
Can you?
Um, certainly, we can go and put added features to it if we go to final time. Um, my concern would be as we've gone through this process not having it. Um, I think adding simple, not changing the actual geometry of the bike lane, adding candlesticks. Um, it isn't a huge deal, but we might want to at least um, present that as an option. We are scheduled to have one follow-up um, public open house.
In person, in, in person.
Yay.
So that would be an option to take that to them so that we're actually getting info with it.
And so just to be clear on this, I mean, we, the Washington Avenue, the Bremerton standard here is something that we can't do. We have a five foot bike lane. It's easy for us to pop those in there uh, and put them in there as part of the job. We don't have construction funding. Uh, you know, we have to find that anyway. That's something that we can't do. We have the same issue with six street uh, that we have here with the density of the driveways, right? Um, so, so you know, it could be that you get out there and you have one candlestick and fifty feet away, you have another one, right? I mean, that's, you know, we haven't.
Can we put them on the line instead of inside the line?
We, we can, you know, um, so it was the developer who did that and.
I think as part of this, we'd wanna develop a standard.
Yeah, like actually give five full feet.
So the reason why we did this here just inside the line is because at certain periods of time, we have to go, go through and maintain this edge stripe because it wears away over time. Um, and uh.
You guys don't have a striper.
Right, but we hired one.
And every candlestick, get that white stripe. So now you can go spray that white line and just drive down that lane and you can spray the whole thing if you've done.
Right.
In ten minutes or fifteen minutes as opposed to trying to catch the line with the candlesticks in the middle of it.
And, and the other, the other issue that we had here is that um, we had thermoplastic here, which is a certain type of striping. And so there's really difficult adhesion that we would have with uh, uh, candlesticks here on, on this. So just some considerations that we would uh, need to consider as, you know, we're looking at this. But we can definitely put them inside the line. That's something that we can do uh, as part of this.
Sounds like we have a compromise event here. You're gonna get candlesticks possibly.
Maybe.
Um, help me out here and, and I like this idea. I'm not, I have a bicyclist, but I do think that's important. I really do. Just to show, we had circular discussion where people have a sense. Cars know they can't park. That was your main deal earlier this year. These cars are parking here, so that helps avoid that. Um, just on the practicality, I know we're in a climate uh, that doesn't always have snow, but I've seen it here where we've had lots of snow. What do you do with the plows? When you have a situation like that, have you thought that one through? You just. Cause good dudes, if you, cause if you plow enough snow, you could probably blow all those candlesticks out too, because it, snow's gonna go.
It could damage, it could get popped off. We could be in a situation where we're doing a lot of candlestick replacement. Uh, you know, we're gonna learn about it, I guess.
Okay.
It's not like we have it all over the city and we've been doing it for ten years. We have one place where we've done it recently. And we have a head of this no event, we plowed in Washington since we've done it. Uh, it'd be kinda nice if we had, I don't know, eighteen inches of snow, maybe not.
We can.
There's, there are another.
Three days a year.
So there's gotta be a, there's gotta be a way. So I just, oh, okay.
I personally, going back to where you put the candlesticks, I think it looks better if it's on the line. But from a maintenance and going back and fixing it, you know, later and adhesion, I understand why that isn't that way. So.
Maybe you just have to let the thermo cure more and then you can put them on and then you'll never be repainting it anyway. Okay.
Hey, so Ned, where are we at? Our, whoever's orchestrating this deal here.
Well, I think what we heard about protected bike lanes, protected is that we'd like to see additional measures. And I think, uh, here's what I would say to that. As long as we're not adding right away. We're not changing geometry and channelization and it's not like a redesign of the project. I think that is a simple thing to incorporate. And even if you include it as an add alternate in the bid, whereas the contractor committed. And then we find out if we have enough money or not, and maybe it's not part of the contract that we're out of money.
Right, like in the other option earlier today was another, another two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So this may be something, the council may have to come up with additional money.
You don't have construction money or the final estimate of cost yet. So when we go for the, if we complete it in the grant, we have requests, we have a good chance of getting that money. Um, I think the, the hard part is changing the design to the point where we're removing curve, removing striping. Where increasing right away or decreasing right away. Like we've done a lot of work to get through an environmental process. Where you define the boundaries and then you work within that. So any of those changes could potentially impact some, undo some of the work that we've already done to get to where we are. And we need to be careful about that. So Shane, did I say that right?
Yeah, yeah, I did, yeah.
This was the one where the SEPA approval was dependent on you're performing in a herpetological study, was it not?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
And, and you've managed to find no rare or endangered shapes along the stretch of Naval.
No.
That's cool. Yeah.
As long as it's not a dump.
I got the sense we wanted to move on from this slide.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, excellent. No questions?
No, so the question, questions are, I guess to the council, we have an agenda item in front of us. First, we don't vote until next week. But are you guys satisfied with this agenda bill? Do you wanna discuss it more?
So my suggestion, I'll throw this out there, is, is put it on general business, right? Because one, one of the reasons I really wanted to say pause, because I saw a number of the community surprised, right? That, that, you know, for whatever reason. And so um, I think I've gotten a good answer on the, you know, the outside bike lane. Um, we just don't have the width, uh, we can't, we can't do it. I really appreciate the baller discussion and the turn pockets. That wish was not the way to do them, but that, that seems to be the standard. So, um, but that's it. Put it on general, have a good presentation for the public and for folks. Um, watching who's paying attention to the discussion. If you, if there's some alternative we did not cover or discuss tonight or wasn't presented or something that we haven't examined, then come with that. We can, we find something compelling, we can, you know, postpone it another two weeks.
Well, to be clear.
I think, I, otherwise I think we've covered the bases here.
This item is the amendment, it's not the design. So I'm not necessarily comfortable saying, hey, we're gonna bring a whole discussion on general business. And open it up to the, the public for public discussion for the whole line. When this item that we're bringing forward is trying to get an amendment to H D R's contract so that we can start the right of way phase.
Well, they're gonna come anyway, they're gonna come.
I'm just, I'm more talking about the presentation you just described. We're gonna go and come give you a presentation on a contract amendment for right of way phase. That's what you're gonna get.
I feel like the more communication we can clear up now early, right, obviously, the better, which is another reason we just want a quick pause of the holidays. So I.
Yeah, no worries. I, I see your point, Jeff, and I agree with letting everybody know. But I got a feeling that the people that are gonna comment or watching this tonight or be watching in the next couple of days. And your presentation, this was excellent, telling us, you guys addressed, in my opinion, what I could tell the comments, you guys addressed the concerns. Explain to the council. The question is, and, and the reason why we're going over this, I understand. This purpose, this task is for the right of way acquisition, but you don't wanna go through right of way acquisition if. The council's not gonna approve this final design because they're gonna have to do it. So I get that. So really, this presentation tonight is for council to be comfortable with this design. So you can go ahead and do your right of way acquisition. We're all clear on that. So that's the question tonight. It's not asking you which way you're gonna vote on the contract. Contract is pretty simple. You're gonna have to do right of way acquisition. Might as well get it done. Are you guys comfortable with the design or Jeffrey, you telling me you need more time?
Well, for any folks listening, again, I can send something in. For right now, I'm comfortable that the right of way acquisition is sufficient. But, but to go back to it, what, what's the next step in this project? So if we approve the full contract and the full right of way acquisition.
We're gonna start acquiring right away.
Yeah, and then when is that open house for finalizing the design? I'm, because we're ninety percent already.
So we plan to do it, um, actually early in this year. Uh, we need the money. We need that contract so we can do it. So we still plan to do it fairly early in the year. And I'm gonna tell you what the point or the purpose that. My understanding is why we're gonna have it. We need to invite people who live along the corridor to understand that how the right of way is going to impact them. And then we also wanted to show the public that, hey, we heard your request to extend the bike lanes north of eleven. Here is the design. So it's kind of a two-fold um, open house. Um, now if you guys feel we need to three-prong it, there's something else, we can do that as well.
But it's not like, hey, we're bringing this to the public at a hundred percent or ninety percent asking for you to redesign the project.
Right, yeah.
That is not what it is. It is like, hey, here's where we are and here's another opportunity for you to be informed about our project. So.
I think one thing that would be helpful for you to add to um, this presentation. You checked the boxes that certain things have been done. If you can put some dates in, like, when was? You checked the boxes that certain things have been done. If you can put some dates in, like, when was the sixty percent plan completed?
Slide had all of the, how did we get here slide?
Yeah, it didn't have dates.
Yeah, it didn't have the, it had dates for um all the milestones in there, so it was like thirty sixty.
You put that in, yeah, Robert?
We don't intend to bring this presentation as a general business item to bring it to council.
Just through a reminder.
Right, that makes sense to everybody, right?
But it should be something that, put on the website so the public can look at it.
I, yeah, I don't have necessarily have a problem with posting it to the website, but.
Right, but I'd like, but I'd like to see the the dates, the thirty and sixty percent.
Sure, so you're saying spring open house?
To follow along with the SAG, so we kinda have a way of doing it with. Do develop design, work through the city, go to the public, go to the first open house to get, you know, some of their thoughts before the design started. Then we had the SAG meeting, so right between. That is when we would have thirty percent design. Yes, there are dates on here. It doesn't call out.
But the thirty and sixty is not on here. And I think Jane, are you asking to update this slide for the thirty and sixty design milestones? And we can post this to the website?
Because I'm getting a lot of feedback that people claim they never saw a sixty percent plan, that it wasn't made available for the public. So I just wanna be able to say, well, on this day.
Follow sixty percent because that plan's been on the website.
Exhibit that's on there right now, that's sixty percent.
I thought you had ninety percent on now.
No, we don't have it. We have ninety percent plan, but this is a sixty percent exhibit, so it's like a roll plot that shows the entire quarter.
So it's not really a plan, it's a artist's rendering.
No.
It's, it's AutoCAD. We call them roll plots.
He's gonna show you.
Yeah, show, show them the ninety, ninety percent one. This is the one that we'll have for you.
So this is the sixty percent exhibit that we prepared specifically for the public because it's not engineering plans, which a lot of people have.
And navigate.
Can't navigate and don't understand. So we prepared something specifically for the public that they could, they could use.
Okay, well.
Yeah, but this is, there's a sixty percent roll plot out there that shows the alignment. And it'd be updated with the design. And the biggest difference is going to be the extension.
Yeah.
Bike lanes for the land.
So when was this posted to the website?
It's not, yeah, it's not.
When was council notified that it was, it was?
Right now.
Hang on a second. The sixty percent has been on for a very long time.
Sixty percent?
The sixty percent has been on.
That's what I'm asking.
We have, we have something on the website for sixty percent.
On the page.
And it's this, it's a, a roll plot like this for sixty percent. And when was it posted?
In twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, we posted a document like this that shows the sixty percent design roll plot with all the channelization and the planned bike lanes since twenty twenty-two. Now, we've just recently posted the actual construction documents, the ninety percent, right? And now we're also gonna post this roll plot, which is the ninety percent, which is not on the website right now.
Right.
Does that make sense?
It it does, it totally, it totally.
Very hitchhiker's guide of the galaxy.
I see how I called you by your right name.
I know, you're the first one today.
I called you by your name. So, so the thing is, once, if something is posted to the website and council doesn't know about it, and public doesn't know about it, then it isn't, it's like that tree that falls in the forest. So this was something that, you know, back in twenty twenty-two, when I was in the Public Works Committee, this, and twenty-three, this was something that kept coming up, was like, we really want to know, one, we don't wanna see draft. But once something's ready for the public, council really should be notified so that we can make it available to the public so that you're not getting whip-smapped. I know that's not a word, um, at, but, you know.
I bet you can spell it though.
I could.
I can.
Um, at at nine, at ninety percent.
So we don't have that process in place. I understand what you're saying. I understand the frustration with it. And I, I know we've taken some criticism for unsurmoniously putting these on the website. But uh honestly, we need some help from IT, I think, and our web manager to figure out how we, like, it should be kind of an automated process. You make a change, you post it, and then there's like the uh.
Notification.
The web server or the listserv, the listserv that gets notified of the change.
Well, how can we help you develop that? Um, how can we be of use?
I think it's gonna take a little time, is all I can tell you. I don't think there's anything you can do. I think we're aware of it. And I think it's something that hasn't been a high priority, because honestly, we've been spending a lot of time trying to sort out like Sixth Street and Naval right now, so.
Okay, so we're at general business, right, on B six on Wednesday. We're not getting this full presentation we got last night. Uh, Vicky, you'll be, I think, we provide you a s- a summary of what's on this agenda bill as far as amending the contract for right of way acquisition.
And then I would say, I'm, just like, we would like to get this done. If this gets stuck and the only way to get it through is some uh middle ground process where we hold something, which I really hope we don't do, like, it's not gonna be helpful if we do that. Then we're not planning on preparing the alternate motion and agenda bill that covers the ground of what that would look like. So if you think that's something that you need in your hip pocket, who am I looking at? Right? I'd be, I'd be bringing it and working that through and ready to present that to the council members to try to see if that's something that we need to do. But we're gonna bring this forward a hundred percent and look for council approval hopefully. That's where I think we're at.
Yeah, I'll say a lot. You've addressed my concerns. I feel much more educated than I was a month ago. Again, I never know what, might hear from somebody, right, as Eric always says, with the right game of mind.
Sure.
But, okay, yeah.
That's our plan.
But it's good to know that in the springish, we'll have a public meeting, people can still get input and first meeting. And we're looking to do hundred percent design by.
When you say people can give input, this is informing them.
Of impact from right away.
Yep, yeah, yeah. Yep, but hundred percent design in.
Yeah.
Uh, when.
It depends on the right of way process.
Yeah.
This is the.
Like a year, at least, a year plus now.
The, the, tend to this is, as you go through the negotiations, there're gonna be some, um, you know, discussion of how those tie-in points are, so all that is maybe built into that final, my package.
What people want.
Yeah, and I think one of the slides, how they showing how like the stairs were built out of the existing sidewalk. So I go work with the property owners, figure out how to create that property.
Gotcha.
All that kinda stuff, get brought in.
And on, on the roll plot Robert put on there, um, you'll see in the ledge and you'll be able to see what's permanent and temporary acquisitions as well.
Great, thanks. I have one final question. Um, you talked about uh tenant and landlord dislocation and then relocation. The displacement and relocation, and that's just the place at eleven and Naval, right?
That's correct.
Let's check.
I hope that's true.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You don't wanna stick around for the next hour and a half?
I'm gonna talk about the.
Thank you.
I'm sure.
Shane, Ned, Vicky, thank you.
Okay, so that uh concludes agenda bill briefings. Now we're gonna go to general council business. Side them up is a briefing on the ordinance to modify rules for safe off-street parking. We have council member Revolowski, so go ahead, Shane.
So I just emailed to each of your email addresses a draft letter. On a, Jennifer and I met with Kylie to discuss um how we can gauge interest in the faith community to um possibly host five to six vehicles an evening. These would be people without permanent homes who are currently living in their cars, not RVs. Um, and we're trying to find out if the faith community will, is even interested in hosting. I talked with um Anton from Northwest Hospitality, who's been trying to get a larger scale safe parking project and hasn't had any luck with that in the city. Um, I talked with Chief Wolf and he thought um he would have no problem with having five to six vehicles spread out at different locations throughout the city. Um, that way, there wouldn't be any neighborhood um uproar. And um it would be easier for them to manage, and we wanna make it very minimal requirements. Like you have a trash can and toilet facilities, and that would either them using the um the church's bathroom and sink or a portable toilet with a uh portable stink attachment.
With a contract.
Yeah, to keep it clean. So I prepared a, a draft letter for Eric's signature. If it's something that you would like sent out to the faith community to gauge their interest.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at the letter? I do have copies.
Okay, I I just emailed it to everybody too.
And this would remove the requirement to put it between link fence and to establish a safety plan and.
Right.
So it's way less on it.
Right. Because we do have a very complicated way of them doing it now and now that the churches have chosen to take that route.
Will be unitarian for a while.
They're not in the city.
Oh, right, you keep telling me that and I keep forgetting.
Essentially, we'd be extending our current um uh process for allowing uh churches to do temporary camping. We've found the books for a long time to vehicles. I mean, so very analogous.
Yes, but with less rules.
Gotcha.
Okay, um, first of all, I wanna say I have no problem if the council wants me to, to sign a letter to uh reach out to the faith community. I, I do have a question whether our current ordinance has written out of the special development code that allows this is actually prohibiting faith member community from doing this. So I, I would suggest, I after, after we run this letter by Kylie, our legal counsel, to change the wording of the, the letter to say, uh, whatever, uh, our code al- allows, uh, we're inquiring why, basically, there is no safe parking locations in the city. Is there anything on our books that's prohibiting you from doing so? Because I think, I'm going back a couple of years and this uh, the church that my wife goes to, I go to a couple of times here, but uh. Christmas and Easter, you know, you know the deal, the husband contract. Okay, so now I'm gonna get in trouble. They, they were doing, they were gonna do some outreach and I recall that the uh church ended up calling their insurance agent and finding out, can we do this? And the insurance company's like, you're not covered for that. So I don't know if that's a universal concern. So I'm good with this. I'm good with reaching out to the community again after running by council, but maybe not kinda just ask, is there anything in our books that's precluding you from doing this?
We.
Instead of encouraging them, hey, you need to do this, or not even, I don't even think it quite says that, but, but basically, because I think you can do it now. I think you can do it now.
No, they have to have a safety plan, a, a security plan. They have to have it fenced. They could only have it for a certain amount of time.
Ri- right, it doesn't allow like permanent camping on the parking.
Right, not.
Now, are you suggesting that we do that? We do have, that, are you suggesting that uh we allow camp, like campers and all that stuff?
No, just, just, just cars, no RVs, no tents.
So what is a Sprinter van?
And at night only, like just for the evening, and then they would drive away.
Well, they could decide though.
True.
That, that's the facility's decision.
Is there a committee that we could work this through?
Public safety, maybe?
Kylie, can you give us some guidance on this, so I'm not?
We have a public safety meeting next month. Um, so you're asking great questions, and I mean, that trial that's been up and doing this that we talked about. I don't know that, as it is right now, the um, if a church parking lot um was allowing overnight parking at their facility, um, that would probably fall within what they have a parking lot for.
Mm-hmm.
Um. It'd be probably treated differently if it were, you know, tents, if it were an RV lot and people are residing there. I see this really differently. There's really no difference from, you know, someone sleeping here in the day or sleeping there at night. Sort of what they, I guess what I'm saying is, but I don't know that the code that you're talking about, the special development standard would necessarily prohibit exactly what you're talking about.
So, yeah, I don't think it.
Don't think it does either.
I think that.
Maybe the perception of it.
It gives a perception by having that, that there's too many rules for them to do it. It's like, do they even need, do we need to be even be involved?
We might not, and so maybe finding out what the interest level is on, for the faith base, uh, you know, do, who wants to do this? And are we in their way or are we not? And it probably depends on what they wanna do and the scope, right? Like if they want fifty RVs.
Yeah.
Maybe that's where those development standards come into play, if it's five cars parking overnight in their parking lot. Maybe there's nothing standing in the way of them doing that.
X, Y, Z, outside services or not.
Or, or not even, they can provide what they're.
Whatever they want.
What they want, and so maybe we're not, I don't think, uh, my understanding is you wanna make sure that we're, we don't have regulations in place that are standing in the way. And we might not have any, but it probably depends on what it, what it is they wanna do. Um.
I think it's never necessarily helpful to play what if, like, if we get a proposal from initial site, it's.
But why do they have to go through you?
Well, they might not. This one's saying, a lot of people do stuff and then you talk about it.
Right.
And then if it gets to be a problem, we find out about it, we see if there's a code. Um, but if, I think what I'm hearing though is that there's a perception that people do have to go through.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or through DCD, for under the tipper, and depending on what that is, maybe they do or maybe they don't, they could certainly call out. We haven't even had any inquiries. And so maybe that would be the.
I never, I, I never called to ask if I need a permit to do something either, you know, which I think probably half the people in the city do and half don't, yeah.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, like, right now, I think it seems like there might be some interest in this. Or maybe there's not, I guess we'll find out, but the, the idea was that we'd send a letter to find out what the interest is
Mm-hmm.
in doing, um.
But I like, I like Eric's idea of rewording it, it's like, is there anything we're doing that makes it difficult?
And I don't even know if it needs to go to the committee. If you guys are okay with it, I can work with Kylie. We can, I understand your intent.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll just do it that way, and then I'll share it with you all guys and then I'll sign.
Okay.
Sounds great.
That sounds great, yeah. And then if, then we will use that as feedback and we'll support from there.
Okay.
Okay, maybe it's that, maybe the answer is, if there's people that are interested, we don't have code that prohibits, then so.
Yeah.
Go forth and do what you wanna do.
Okay, well, that didn't take as long as I thought. My wife was like, how much longer? And I said, well, I'm sorry, it's gonna be more than half an hour, so. However, we do, are now going to public works committee briefings of all the.
Well.
Did you guys talk about naval or city?
And that was all we talked about. And um, prior to the meeting, which was the day that I was getting incredibly ill, I had a very long conversation with Ned Pryor. And he thought we were gonna talk about different things, and I told him, no, this is what we wanted to talk about. So uh Jeff, Denise and I brought up concerns that we personally had and that we had heard from the community about both the Naval and Sixth Street plans. Um, and he brought Nick and Gutter to the uh meeting and Tom was there. And basically, they just listened to what our concerns were. And they addressed most of them this evening, so.
Okay.
Yeah, really productive and.
Yeah.
I just say a lot, I think that these discussions are great because this is a really constantly evolving topic and working, you know, about ten years ago that may be out of standard practice now, and so I think everyone's on the same page of like, let's spend the time, early as possible, to make sure that we know we're doing the stuff, most up to date, that uh, that's fantastic, so. Appreciate the staff.
Just because it's a new year now, any progress on the investigative study for speed bumps on Snyder Avenue?
No.
Good.
Sorry.
Well, yeah.
We're waiting, we're waiting for a response from staff, so that. We're waiting, we're waiting for a response from staff, so that did not come up at our December. It was just naval and sixth.
Right.
We didn't even talk about any utility stuff.
Okay. Regional and other committee board meetings.
Oh, really interesting KSF transit meeting that we. I I thought and think, um. The. We're KSF trying to spending like a hundred and ninety seven K. To complete a feasibility study or a design feasibility study for. Storing access buses at the Gateway Park and Ride. I said, this is part of our whole district center concept and Gateway Park and Ride as well within the Charleston District Center. And the whole county is pushing for Bremerton to be the dense residential urban thing and, you know, save rural areas for elsewhere. And. Um. They, there was some, um, support on on the KSF Transit Board for this position. But there was also the feeling that even though it said in black and white that this was to find out how to affect zoning changes, among other things. Um. In the city of Bremerton to allow for the storage of access buses. So here's why I'm bringing this to you. It's not just a rap. Um, it's, I said, I don't think city council would be in support of zoning changes to turn Gateway Park and Ride into an access storage location. So I'm going to you guys. Am I wrong on this?
You're not wrong.
Okay.
At least from me.
Does our zoning specifically prohibit? Uh, long-term parking versus back use?
Well, it wouldn't be long-term parking, it would be like parking at night, coming back out, parking, you know. So do you think that that would enhance the quality of the Charleston District Center?
Let's see if council even has any jurisdiction or venue on this. Garrett, were you overhearing the conversation? Is that a? Do you know about the gateway? Is that allowed use right now? Does store buses? Actually, they use that right now for.
We went through this with, uh. KSF Transit previously and said that would not be allowed to use.
Okay.
So it sounds like very shit.
Okay. Yeah, so therefore, you correct me if I'm wrong, this is always one of those gray areas. If it's quasi-judicial, we shouldn't be talking about it in a council meeting, not. On certain things. So am I on the right track there, or we can talk about this tonight?
They don't, there's not an application.
No, there's no application.
Okay, so then we can talk about the concept.
The transit we're into developed. So they're trying to shoehorn. In a, a transit benefit. Which could be some hybrid of storage. And we don't know, whatever, whatever it could be, overnight, drop off that night, pick up that morning, same. And then with a affordable housing component.
Oh, I see. Yeah, sure.
So which. So right now, there's, there's that.
Gotcha.
Didn't work the first time, um, they closed. It was too heavy on storage and those type of things, so. Um, yeah. The money's, the federal money's being al- allocated for transit to spend and. Um, I can jump in and say that I, you know, I supported Council Moakler when he said this. Ultimately, it'll be the council's decision.
Okay.
But, um, I was saying, if transit had a vision for the property and it's not realized. Then there's a lot of value, um, market value, if we could.
Mm hmm.
Figure out what would the market return on the property? Um. You know, would that be a granted basis? And so they, that that's a little bit ahead of their top process, obviously. They just wanna get this study up to see what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you said they're doing a study now? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, they're doing a design feasibility study, and there was, you're quite right, Mayor, there was a lot of talk about how this might be affordable housing or residential housing. There's nothing in black and white. There's nothing in the contract that got bid on about that. So I just giving you guys a heads up and.
Yeah.
Just making sure I'm not speaking out of turn in general, not so excited about.
Vehicle.
So you're saying, okay, so you're saying the contract said. To look at the feasibility of storing vehicles, and the contract didn't say about looking into. Housing. It was just a.
I can just throw in a comment, I don't know what's that, cuz I feel like. They've, um. Made changes to how they're using that property already that I'm not sure, uh, they went through proper permitting. And, uh, you know, we're trying to revitalize the Calo area and have a, you know, a place that big just used. You know, they basically eliminated the retail in there and changed it to warehouse.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm glad we just. Need to follow the rules.
So here's the summary statement. I I hadn't realized all of that. In twenty two, KSF Transit completed the yada yada feasibility study. The study determined that more work is needed to allow for the storage and operation of access service buses on the site. This study will work towards implementation of needed zoning changes, design feasibility, and future of the Gateway Center for access operations. And other uses on the site. Um, and then here's all the funding, so. That's it. That's what in black and white this study is for. If it decides to investigate housing or market. Yeah.
Should be funded or in it, right?
Well, it doesn't, uh.
The Federal Service Transportation Block Grant Program. And what if it's huge and sound, right? You wanted all of it?
Yeah. Okay, so that was, that was it. I mean, everything else that happened at KSF Transit, uh. There was a long discussion about making buses fare free. Um. And it was a very interesting discussion, but. Not so interesting that at eight forty-eight at night, I wanna give you all the blow-by blow.
Yeah. Anyone else regional? Those committee? I'll just real quickly say that, uh, Mayor Wheeler and I were on the nine one one, Sincom Board meeting. They meet monthly now, before it was quarterly.
No, it's monthly.
They do give you a free sandwich, though, so.
It looked good.
It was good. Oh, you were there before for the KSF and saw the eats coming. Okay, some housekeeping items. February eighth is our council retreat. The other two weekends, I'm sorry, Michael, I know you mentioned, but that's the day we're gonna, it's gonna be at Gold Mountain. And, uh, we'll still, you're all good?
Yeah.
I know, yeah. Okay, there's, there's two other things I'm asking the council, let me start with, um. So I've done this job before, and I really, some, sometimes, cuz we only meet every two weeks for study session, I wanna get things in the. In the pipeline. Before it gets to count. So one thing I'd like to do is, uh, Lori's position. I'd like to have an ad hoc committee with myself and two other council members. It will go through the job description, we'll review it, come up with a draft, then we'll present it to the full council in the study session, hopefully approve it. And then get this job posted.
Yeah, I'd like to be on that ad hoc committee. I've talked to Charlotte about job descriptions. I've taken, uh, two webinars in training.
Okay.
Like how to do job descriptions. I'd like to be on it.
Okay, I'm open to that, but if you, anyone else is interested, you don't have to tell me now, just shoot me an email, I won't respond, I will. Be violating, uh, someone says, someone says, why, why won't Eric respond? Man, he's one rude SOB. No, we're not going to violate, uh, whatever, uh, Public Records Meeting Act, whatever, just sending, actually. Yeah, yeah, send, just send me an email, I just won't respond. Am I okay with that?
You're just trying to figure out.
Yeah, that's all I want, but you just, or or you wanna do it now, just speak it up, I'll just pick the two people, it'll be quicker.
Yeah.
And. Happy to, but.
I'm happy to as well. I've worked in HR.
So I have a, okay, so.
Oh, you worked in HR?
I have a master's degree in leadership.
Okay, then it could be yours.
I didn't know they had masters.
Okay.
It's like we call.
Show me. All right. And I'm suggesting that, uh. The hiring process will be similar. It'll be the ad hoc committee. And, uh, we'll, the way I hire in my other organization, we have a board, uh. Perhaps someone from council, certainly someone from HR will be there, whether they're voting or not, will be determined. But the way we select it, we have to consensus, everybody has to be unanimous on who the final person is, okay? So, um. We may go to the executive session, get everybody in, but in, we might do it that way, too. I don't. That's my intent. What I'm getting at is I'm not the one that makes the decision, it's gonna be a group decision. Though the other thing I wanna get started on is, uh, I'd like to sort out this lodging tax going forward, what this looks like and all that stuff. Oh, my goodness, I don't wanna do this in a group. I'd like to iron it out with three people. Again, then put it before the stud- the study session, so I'm volunteering myself. Denise is is logged off, I understand. But I'm volunteering, so because of that, I'm volunteering her, I just think it's obvious she wants to be on it.
I'd like to be on it.
And then Jane, and we all give that, with the three of us, we can meet during the day, I can take time off of work, um. And we can meet during the day, uh. We'll discuss this in a couple of weeks when someone else is more available. I'd like to get that started. That's all I have. Anything else?
I have one good of the order. Um, can anybody tell us the status on the DEI position? Is that? Moving forward or?
Yeah.
And. Before tomorrow. So our top, like, top five, they're gonna do Zoom on, and then. Update on the next step.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
And then my quick, uh, closing announcement, the next council meeting will be on Wednesday, January fifteenth, starting at five thirty PM on the first floor meeting chambers. Norm Vic's government senate public is invited to attend in person or remotely. Anyone wishing to speak during public recognition via Zoom must submit their request to the city clerk by calling three six zero. Four seven three, five three two three, at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. This meeting's adjourned.